And I'm calling the Regional School Committee to order. And note, we're being recorded.
And then I would like to call the public hearing, budget hearing to order for Concord.
I'm calling the Regional School Committee Budget Hearing to order.
I abandoned.
Any public comments?
Yeah, I think we go.
Well, actually, we'll go first to budget presentation. Sorry about that.
Just for a point of clarity, I see so many familiar faces here. I know many have seen this a couple of times. For the sake of the television and audience at home that may be watching, we want to be sure we honor the public hearing. So we are going to do the whole presentation and then act, you know, make it a hearing and discussion. So thank you for your patience.
Mr. Jared, will you clearly delineate when you're speaking to one hearing or you're speaking to the other?
Yep.
Sure.
So the first presentation will be the CPS budget.
I'm gonna fire right now if you need more. I meant you two.
So thank you. This is the seventh time now I take on this. So for the new people, I'm Jared Stanton, the Director of Finance. The first budget presentation is the Concord Public School budget. So what we did, as most of you know, is we did a zero-based budget process. And what is zero-based budgeting? It's a method of budgeting in which all expenses must be justified. It starts from a zero base and every function is analyzed for its needs and its costs. During the past four months, principals, administrators, department heads, board staff, we reviewed all 512 lines of the FY '19 CPS budget and built every single line in FY '20 from scratch. It was a collaborative effort and it worked because everybody got into it. We were able to consolidate many lines. In FY '20's budget was reduced by 72 to 440 lines. I expect FY '21's to be reduced by even more. So some of the highlights of what we reviewed included three to five years' worth of legal, salaries, including FTEs, steps, planes, longevity, stipends, substitutes, overtime, contract services, memberships and fees, PD, all aspects of special education. We then reviewed all supplies and materials, textbooks, equipment, software, hardware. We continue to take a deeper dive in contracts for copiers and cell phones, but we've already identified some dependencies. In addition, we recently hired a transportation consultant to see if we can do things more efficiently and help us with a sustainable tenure plus replacement cycle. The superintendent's CPS recommended budget for FY '20 is $39,391,63, which is 2.99% higher than FY '19 School Committee-approved budget. The chart on this slide is by DESI 1000 function. And as you can see, I broke it down into a number of different categories here. The first one being the FY '18 School Committee-approved budget, then the FY '18 transfer budget, the actuals for FY '18, the delta between the actuals and the transfer budget, FY '19's adopted budget, FY '20's requested, and then the delta between the two. As you can see also on this slide, there are a few large drivers, such as instructional leadership and some large reductions, including district leadership and admin and programs with other districts. It's important to note that on this slide, instructional leadership is up 3.47% from FY '19 budgeted, but it's actually up 10% or 2.7 million more than FY '18 actuals. Other school services is increasing 11.76% in FY '20, mainly due to special education and transportation. We also saw a decrease in the -- we saw a decrease this year in FY '19, but we expect we can get back to earth a little bit in FY '20. We're working with CASE to figure out how we can sort of close those big gaps from not happening right here. The increase in fixed charges is due to early retirement. So instead of breaking down the budget drivers by DESI function, I broke them down by expense category. These categories included contingency, contract services, equipment, legal, teacher longevity, teacher stipends, maintenance, memberships, overtime, professional development, all the salaries. Other expenses included supplies and materials, textbooks, curriculum, substitutes, utilities, and many more. In all, I created 32 different expense categories for the CPS side. And the drivers on this slide are the biggest drivers for the FY '20 budget. Contract service category is increasing 15.53% due to a number of reasons. Number one, which will be a common theme throughout this presentation as well as the next one, again, we did an audit of every account and things in the past that may have been a contract service, they have been paid out of a different expense category. Special education contract services are going up $103,000 due to current and FY '20 needs, but also the expense type that we're charging you to. Maintenance contract services are increasing $66,000. And lastly, special education transportation costs are going up $113,000. Employee separation costs are going up 198%. That's a bit misleading. The reason for that is we filled all the employees who were taken with incentive at a $30,000 decrease in salary in this budget. We budgeted all the teacher vacancies at $75,000 and we expect the average new hire to be around this range. The salaries are budgeted in different expense categories, such as the teacher salaries. The savings are directly in the teacher salaries and not at the cost or in the employee separation category. This is also the first year that we budgeted the known early retirement incentive amount, which was $233,000. And contractually, we had a simply buyback increase for next year, which is $52,669. Aids salaries going up 11.8%, not necessarily because we hired a lot more aides, unless a tutor's position was doing this function in the past and it made more sense to hire an aide that reduced costs, but because there were many aides that were being paid out of the correct accounts, such as the tutor accounts. Therefore, you're going to see an increase in aides and a large decrease in the tutor's percentage. It's also important to note that DESI recognizes tutors, aides, and paraprofessionals in the same reporting function. So it's more of a housekeeping thing, but we still reported it to the state correctly. Substitute lines have increased 95% from 9% because DESI has created a new function for long-term subs. Instead of charging a long-term substitute salary directly to the teacher's line, we are now -- that they are replacing. DESI created a new function so that long-term subs can be reported in those lines themselves. This is not necessarily a cost increase because contingencies were put in the teacher salaries accounts in the past. Budgeting long-term subs, I guess, and oftentimes you see savings because the person going out is at a higher step of the column than the person replacing them. We are currently about to enter contract negotiations with the CTA, but the contract expiry includes a double-step raise for every teacher that is not on his or her top step. For example, if you are currently in Master VI, this fiscal year, at the end of this fiscal year or the beginning of FY '20, you will place at a Master Step VIII. This is a contractual increase. It does not include a cost of living increase that is about to be lowered. There is a budgeted increase in these lines of contract negotiations and we expect there to be parity between the CTA and the CCTA. Teacher salaries account for $22,537,742 of the $39.39 requested and about 96% of FY '20's recommended increase. The amount budgeted for teachers in FY '20 is 2.4 million more than the FY '18 actuals. Supplies and materials are going up 51.47%, but this is mainly due to the way that we budgeted these items in the past. We consolidated the number of supply lines, contract service lines, equipment lines. We also bumped up elementary schools to where they were budgeted prior to FY '19. In fact, the amount requested for supplies and materials is only $111,000 more than was spent in FY '18. And that does not include any supply and materials that may have been spent out of the month category. Also, for next year, we budgeted everyday math, which was a three-year program that we had not had expenses in the past two years. So it turned about $90,000. So that is a really big reason why the large increase. And the amount recommended to give us more on par with our historical spending. The increase in clerical salary is contractual and also putting people in the correct accounts. The increase in maintenance custodial transportation is also contractual, but the increase is also driven by a new custodial FTE at the Sanborn that is about to -- there's need to keep up with the needs of the building. So overall, we identified $2.6 million in budget drivers. So to offset the budget drivers, we identified $1.599 million in cost savings. Over the summer, the district advertised an RFP for a new school committee with a special education lawyer. By doing so, the rate went from $1,100 to $210 per hour. We anticipate the cost savings to be at least 17.6%, but most likely much, much more. Through attrition and some rearrangement in some departments, such as human resources, we are saving approximately $38,000 in non-human personnel and $82,000 in support staff. Our largest cost savings is in the tutors line. This is also misleading through the zero-based budget process. We identified staff that were budgeted in these lines that should have been in other lines, mostly aides, and moved them to the appropriate accounts. In addition, tutor salaries are now budgeted according to their contracted amount. And we accommodate the yearly obligation correctly in our payroll system. I now know exactly when people are working more than their contracted amount. There are times that tutors will need to work more than their contracted amount, but we now have a better idea of how to get a handle on that. Also, we hired aides in places where tutors were doing the aides' work. Lastly, the FY '20 recommended amount for tutors is only $221,000 less than FY '18 actuals, not the $748,000 that it may appear. Our last cost driver, our last large cost driver is special education tuition. The special education department and the business department are constantly in contact, literally every single day. And we've identified all of every student's costs in this budget process as well as all of the periphery costs. Also, we anticipate to have at least $150,000 circuit breaker carryover from FY '19, which allows us to lower the tuition costs in this general fund budget. You'll notice online, second on the last page in our line item budget, we have an offset of $950,000 in $150 -- and that is for circuit breaker, $150 of that is anticipated for the savings in FY '19. At this time, our total anticipated out of district tuition for FY '20 is $3,134,043, which is $716,000 less than FY '19's budgeted amount. But as you know, special education's fluid and moving target. This slide right here shows the projected savings from the early incentive initiative. I think it speaks for itself. And here's the savings up till FY '23. The CPS budget has eight locations: preschool, district-wide kindergarten, district-wide elementary, ALPOT, Thoreau, Willard, Middle School, and district-wide. The following eight slides summarizes the expense categories by location. The preschool budget increased 20, 28.4% due to an increase in special ed, contract services, aides salaries, and teacher salaries. The contract service increase is more like the actual spending costs. The increase in aides and teacher salaries was because we moved salaries that were budgeted in other locations to this location and not due to an increase in staff. There are also contractual obligations contributing to this increase. District-wide kindergarten is increasing $8,000. As a result of the zero-based budgeting process, we identified what expenditures were needed in a district-wide kindergarten. This is a small budget request of $26,000 for FY '20, but expenditures that are not directly associated with one particular school. And that's why a district-wide, again, is necessary. The district-wide elementary location is increasing 1.19%. A few categories stick out are salaries clerical, which is increasing because of the change in where someone was being charged in the past. So it's not increasing FTE, and it will be decreasing another line. There is also a large decrease in the tutor lines because these tutors are now budgeted in the locations where there are other positive and negative swings that will start with the zero-based budgeting process and consolidating lines. The school discretionary lines, such as equipment, supplies, will all increase over the FY '19 budgeted amounts but are now aligned with actuals. All three elementary schools are relatively similar in their discretionary expenditure budgets. Overall, the ALPOT budget is increasing 3.27%. There's an 8.2% increase in teacher salaries, mainly due to the double-step increase. The reduction in tutors is the result of the zero-based budgeting process and budgeting exactly our obligations based on the contracted amounts and not due to a major decrease in tutors. The amount requested for tutors in FY '20 is still higher than FY '18 actuals. The major increase in supplies is due to consolidating district-wide supply lines and budgeting them in the elementary schools where the expense is happening. Overall, the Thoreau school budget is increasing 4.16%. Contract services are increasing 13.21% due to the new special ed programs designed to keep students in district. Aides have increased 47%, but it was mainly due to budgeting them in the correct account, as you can see by the FY '18 actuals for aides. Teacher salaries again are a big driver at 7.65%. The tutors have decreased but have been replaced by special ed teachers, and that happened earlier in FY '19. And again, supplies are up for the same reason as the other two elementary schools. Overall, the Willard school budget is increasing only 0.41%. The main reason is the teacher's line is saving savings based on FY '19 budgeted and projected FY '20 obligations. Most of the savings in this line is through attrition. Contract services have increased due to special education programs. PD is going up due to Wilson Foundation training. There is a decrease in the aide budget, meaning they're budgeted due from the correct accounts. And again, 34% decrease in staff. The middle school is seeing a 4.56% increase overall. There are 103 lines in the middle school budget in FY '20, increased from 119 lines budgeted in FY '19. Every single one of these lines is zero-based. The nurses' budget is increasing 20.4%, but is now more aligned with FY '19 actuals. The aides line is increasing $105,000. Teacher salaries are only going up 2.97% FY '19 budgeted, but actually going up 14.3% from FY '18 actuals. Lastly, the tutor budget is decreasing 23% from FY '19 budgeted. The district-wide location is decreasing 1.35% from FY '19 budgeted. A lot of the reason for this is due to line consolidation, moving stipends and staff and other expenditures to other locations. There were 158 budgeted lines in the district-wide in FY '19. In FY '20, we've got it down to 120. The contingency budget is up $6,100. The reason for this is we centralized our contingency. We budgeted $125,000 in the general fund contingency for FY '20. Contract services have increased mainly due to maintenance contract services, but putting expenditures in the correct accounts. Salaries for teachers have gone up due to moving two specialists that were budgeted in a school but had a district-wide role. And tutors were moved to the correct school location. And lastly, supplies were increased due to actual expenditures. And that is the CPS budget. Any questions?
Are we opening questions to the audience now on this?
I would think so.
Okay.
First for the committee members, but...
I'm sorry?
No, no. Questions first for the committee members, then we'll go to the audience. Any questions from?
So Jared, we've acknowledged the degree of work you, Lori, and others have done combing through this. You talked a few times about corrections. You mentioned DESI functions that you're aligning with. If I'm correct, most of the internal changes are due to the zero-based approach you took.
Yep.
Where you were simply going down as far as you could go and building it back up. And in doing that, did you find any concerns or patterns about our bookkeeping of past? Or would you say, no, what you found here was more or less what you expected, given A, DES changes, B, you took this thing apart in the granular way you did and put it back together?
Correct. That's exactly it. I expected what I expected. I got what I expected. So there were nothing concerning. It was just really little things, such as contract services and equipment. Might have been sometimes a supply line. A few tutors, obviously, aides lines, but that is still categorized correctly by DESI standards. So just little things like staff. What we did is the first thing, we went through every staff member and we gave the roster to what was in the system to the principals. And they, you know, went through every single one, looked at their salary, looked at their name, their FTE, if they were hourly. They looked at how many hours they were budgeted for, et cetera. Made sure -- that was the big thing. There's a lot of district-wide people in -- or a lot of people in the district-wide that should have been in the schools themselves. But that's it. That's what we expected to find.
Corey, can I just add to that?
Yeah, please.
Because we are very highly regulated, so that any gross issues would certainly have been surfaced long before now. This is all internal bookkeeping that we're cleaning up. We have auditors here every year. We have to file the end-of-the-year report. All of that is completely in compliance. This is all the internal processes that the zero-based benefits from and trying to make sure that we know where things are budgeted so we can track it going forward comparatively and be sure that the zero-based is playing out apples to apples year after year. But you have to have the year of cleanup to do that, especially with two new eyes on the budget that don't know the history of where different things were budgeted. You need to then reset the patterns as to how you're going to allocate things, so.
Was there any discussion or debate necessary about what was allocated to CPS as opposed to region?
No, I think we are --
That came through.
Since I got here, I would be adamant to say we are incredibly tight on that. We know how important it is that the allocations are crystal clean. So I think we're very.
Well, these are people in job functions, so it's a necessary kind of scrutiny you have to do.
And we know we're accountable to both budgets as separate entities. And I think as an operation, we're very respectful of them.
And the auditors are very intuitive. So they look at the split costs and the financing.
Comments, questions from the audience?
Bill Kermeza, I'm the 28 Davis Court.
Could you please come up to the microphone and again state your name, because we have a TV audience.
This is a relatively simple question. Bill Kermeza, 28 Davis Court in Concord. Now that you have what looks like a substantial base, when you're doing this, do you now -- are you also beginning to project out a two- or three-year budget? So that, for example, we know this year it's 2.99%. Do you have a rough idea what it would be next year, total budget? I mean, knowing that there's lots of contingencies, are you aiming for like a 3% increase next year and a 3% the following year?
Truthfully, it's very tough to tell. So what we're doing is every year, we will be doing a zero base.
Every year?
Every year will be. This is how it will be. The first year is the year that we saw all the savings. We're not going to see as many, as much in savings next year that we're seeing this year. But I also have to see how this budget plays through before I really make any projections. Salaries, well, we're going through contract negotiations. You're always going to see an increase of between 4% and 5% in salaries just because of the steps and the lanes and everything. Utilities usually go up, you know, 4% to 8%. Health insurance, 10%. We expect, you know, supplies and everything to be pretty stable for the most part. But to put an actual number on it, this soon for the next year and the year after, it might be tough.
So even as an exercise, do you do it for yourself? In terms of the finance office, are you folks projecting out two or three-year LRP, a long-range plan?
I will. Only been here five months, so I'm putting my own rate. But it's something that will be an exercise, absolutely. You know, come springtime, I want to see how the winter plays out, how this budget plays out. But it's really after I get through almost all of next year and see how the zero-based really worked out to really get to somewhat of an accurate projection of what your planning would look like.
And I'll just piggyback that. The reason I'm hesitant to do it is much to back up Jared's statement. There's still a lot of organizational work going on, special education being the biggest cost driver. But we're also looking at a whole host of other things that we're continuing, I think, till those processes are complete, I wouldn't want to predict because I'm still hoping there's going to be savings out of a number of those while we do better for kids. So I want another year's running room on that organizational work.
I would assume you also want to know what the big things are coming up down the road too. And that way, you have a two- or three-year window. You're looking ahead and know what's coming at you.
Of course. And I think what we're trying to build is bandwidth to accommodate some of those unpredictable things that are coming up. So especially special education, the more services we have available, the less out-of-district placements. Some of that still has quite a bit of work to be done.
Yeah.
But once those programs are in place and we've completed reviews like transportation and some of the other bigger areas still to go, and I don't think we're going to be ready to project forward till we're finished with that, had a year under our belt. Obviously, contracts are always going to be part of that discussion. That's a long one to do not yet.
Dean Banfield, you want to go next?
I'll lead to the other pieces.
There you go. Any other questions from the audience on CPS budget? So we'll go to the high school budget next.
Is it just worth reminding ourselves of where we are with the finance committees as we talk on each budget?
That could be helpful.
I think that is probably thoughtful.
Yeah.
So do we want to talk on the Concord guidelines so far?
Yeah, sure. While we're on this one, that'd be great.
So the preliminary guideline is 2.7?
It is 2.61.
Thank you. So we're percentage of, you know, of less than a percent apart going into these discussions. And we met with them last night and had a lot of good conversation, I think. And I know they're meeting again Thursday night. Several of us are planning on attending. So we're way in the ballpark with each other, which is a great, great thing.
And I think it would be important to just point out also to Lori Swann, this is about, this is at least the fourth time I've gone through the budget.
is about, this is at least the fourth time I've gone through the budget. Some others, two and three times. So it's not that there's not questions, but many questions that we've had haven't answered in other meetings and reiterating our gratitude for and appreciation for all of that work and how clear and transparent and easy to understand this has become for us has been great. And to be at 2.99 is, I think, fantastic with all that work you've done and hopefully, you know, we can bridge it from 2.661, is that what it is. So it's not a huge bridge.
Great.
High school.
So what we did in high school is we took the feedback from both Carlisle and Concord, especially after the last science meeting and the meeting last week in Carlisle. We actually have another slide that I'm going to present to you tonight that is new.
See?
There we go.
New stuff. New things keep coming to come today.
Oh, this is exciting.
Am I the only one that doesn't like new? I don't like...
The rest of us are excited.
Because the numbers are smaller.
It's an explanation, not a number. So again, we did the zero-based budget process in the high school. We were able to exonerate many lines. There was 310 budget lines in FY19's high school budget. And I keep saying this, in a high school budget, that is way, way, way too high. We got it down to 263 lines, and I expect that to be reduced even more next year. And again, these are the highlights that we looked at, all the FTEs, all the supplies, looked at legal, we looked at revolving accounts, we looked at revenue, which is different from CPS. Obviously, we looked at special education, et cetera. So like the last presentation, I broke this down by DESI 100 functions compared to FY18's actuals transferred to deltas than FY19's budgeted, FY20's requested in the delta between FY20 and FY19. The budget for FY20 for the high school is $34 million, not the recommended, requested $34,99657, which is a 3.44% increase on FY19's.
This includes debt. We try to clarify that all through the presentation as to when debt's included and when it isn't.
So this is the general fund budget. And you'll notice, if you've seen the line item budget, I did separate the operating. So operating in the general fund, including revenue, is up 4.68%, but with the debt in what we're looking at here, it's up 3.44%. So I also broke down the high school budget by expense category. And there was 50 expense categories, 18 more in the CPS. Again, some of the things that are included in this was banking, charter assessment, contingency, contract services, debt, early retirement, equipment, insurance, legal, teacher longevity, teacher stipends, maintenance, memberships, OPEB or public post-employment benefits, overtime, professional development, all salary categories. We also had textbook curricula, substitutes, workers' comp, social security, unemployment, utilities, et cetera. So on this slide, also look the biggest drivers in the high school budget. The contract service category is increasing 10.82% to the same reasons that we are in CPS budgeted. We again did zero base of everything, and there were some contract services that were being paid out of other expense categories. Special education contract services are going up $34,000 due to current FY20 needs and also the expense type that we're now charging them to. Maintenance contract services are going up $22,000, and case transportation costs are going up $83,000. Employee separation costs are going up 230%. Again, as we're splitting, we expect to fill all the employees who are taking the incentive as savings of approximately $30,000. We budgeted all teacher vacancies at $75,000, and we expect the average hire to be around this range. The salaries are budgeted in different expense categories, such as teachers. Also, this is the first year that we budgeted and know the early retirement incentive amount, sorry for that, I shouldn't have used that right now, which is $8,000. And also, due to contractual obligations, sick leave buyback is increasing $16,000 over FY19's budgeted. Insurance is increasing $220,000 over FY19's budgeted amount. Health insurance is going up between 10% and 11% as well as retiree health insurance. We are funding other post-employment benefits back to the ARC in this recommended budget. This is almost a 31% increase from FY19 budgeted amount. The $185,000 in OPEB accounts for 13.6% of our total overall increase. Athletic coaches' salaries are increasing due to a few reasons. We're decreasingly monitoring the athletic and volleyball accounts contributing to coaches, but not by much. Last year's coaches' salaries were budgeted at $301,000, but our obligations, what we paid out was $387,000, so it's more of a catch-up. We increased fees last year, and we expect to be about $70,000 to $100,000, but instead of putting that towards the coaches' salaries, we're now paying more for the failing maintenance costs. So that's clearly between those two, the biggest drivers for the increase in the coaches' line. Also introducing two new sports at the high school, girls' freshman basketball and...
Gymnastics.
Gymnastics. And that is only costing the district $11,000. The increase in support staff salaries is contractual, and we appropriately funded the amounts we put staff where they should be through the zero-based budget process. There were no increases in support staff, FTEs in FY19 or in this FY20 budget. Teacher salaries account for $13,371,299 of the 34.9 FY20 requested budget, and 46.1% of FY20's recommended increase. The amount requested is contractual. The amount budget for teachers in FY20 is $945,000 more than FY18 actuals. The software hardware line is increasing $118,000. That is due to, in this budget, we recommend buying the 375 laptop replacements, which is, but we also did a 10-year analysis on what does it cost to lease or supply versus a deferred, a deferred buy or deferred lease. The costs are more expensive in years one and two to buy them, but by FY20, there is some considerable saving costs due to doing it this way and for the duration. So overall, we identified 1.5 million in budget drivers. To offset the budget drivers, we identified $522,000 in cost savings. Debt is going down almost $202,000. There is a reduction in transportation salaries because the full salary contingency needed for the 2017-18 school year for the time change was not needed, not all of it. Transportation driver salaries are budgeted still at $57,000 more than the FY18 actuals, so there was not a decrease in staff. The tutors line is reduced 5.94% from FY19's budgeted due to encumbering the contracted amounts for each tutor in the system and again making sure everyone's in the right lines. Lastly, like the CPS budget, we're seeing a reduction in special tuitions from FY19's budgeted amount due to the zero-based budget and identifying all the students. This slide of the last presentation sort of speaks for itself. This was the early retirement incentive savings. Here is the retiree health insurance costs, FY20's obligations for both. Between the two, they're going up about $185,000 just in health costs, which is above 10, 10 and 1/2% we're projecting. Debt service, here's our schedule, our known schedule until FY38. It's steadily going down. In the delta between FY19 and FY20 is just under $202,000. So in FY20's budget, before we finalize the OPEB ARC, this is an increase of $185,368 from FY19's funded amount. This chart shows the estimated required ARC until 2038. At the beginning of last month, Moody's Investor Service upheld the district's AAA rating, but the report stated that we have AAA with a negative outlook, which reflects our weakened reserve levels and elevated fixed costs following the completion of the new high school. Should our reserve levels weaken further or our fixed costs substantially increase, it would put additional downward pressure on this rating. Moody's said that if we have one, Moody's said that we have one of the highest, if not the highest, OPEB balances of any school district in the state. But since our reserves are low and we continue to use E&amp;D as a revenue source, having low fund balance is more of a negative impact on our bond rating and having a high OPEB balance. In addition, we stated that while treating similar issues to pensions and accounting standards, the costs of retiree health benefits have been approached differently by governments. Most governments meet the current expenses of the plans on a pay-as-you-go basis. Since they do not view these liabilities as having the same contractual or constitutional protections as pension liabilities, they expect that governments will have some flexibility over time to manage these expenses. Therefore, they view prefunding of OPEB liabilities as moderately credit positive, and that was there. So as part of the FY19 budget development process, $689,460 was reserved from FY18 and used to fund the FY19 budget. However, $689,000 did not disappear in FY18. It was simply reclassified from E&amp;D, which is considered unassigned on a district's balance sheet, to the assigned fund balance classification. At this time, I expect FY18's E&amp;D to certify at approximately $940,000, which is roughly As of June 30th, 2018, CCRSC has an unassigned fund balance of $940,000 and an assigned fund balance of $689,460, for a total of $1,629,460 total between those two classifications. Once FY, once this fiscal year began, the assigned fund balance of $689,000 reverted back into E&amp;D or the unassigned balance. As a result, the July 1st unassigned E&amp;D balance is the $1.6 million or approximately 4.83% of the FY19 budget. Operating results can increase or decrease the unassigned fund balance as the year progresses. Most importantly, the district will be required to reserve the $1,629,460 July 1st, 2018 E&amp;D balance in any amount that is voted for this FY20 budget. If 350 is reserved for FY20, then E&amp;D is immediately reduced to $1,279,460 or 3.8% of the FY19 budget. If the same contribution, $689,460, is voted for the FY20 budget, E&amp;D will need to revert back to the 940 or 2.8%. Accordingly, the FY20 budget vote will have an impact on this June 30th E&amp;D certification for unassigned fund balance.
Sorry, Jared, I know you're really on a roll. I'm trying to follow it. Just give me the percentage if you...
See, new information.
So basically...
Go slow.
Right now, and I'm going to go over these scenarios. If we, if we, so as of right now, FY18 E&amp;D, we don't have any because it's not certified. Once they certify, they're going to certify it at the $1.6 million. $689,000 of that is reserved for the FY19 budget. But that's fluid because we might get more revenue than expected, but we also might end FY19's general fund with money in it. So when we vote on this budget, whatever amount we use for E&amp;D to fund FY20 affects the FY19 E&amp;D amount. So if we, in theory, if we use $689,000 again, then our E&amp;D is going to go back down to 2.8. If we use 350, then it's actually going to be 3.8, and that will be a certified E&amp;D. So I think there's been a misconception a little bit that the going back and even using E&amp;D for next year is going to have a negative impact in Moody's eyes. As long as our E&amp;D is going up, then it's going to be a good thing. So if we, when I go over scenario one, if we, if we do contribute 350 instead of the $689, and everything goes as planned, we should have at least 3.8 at the end of this fiscal year.
That's a big improvement then from what we were thinking a couple of weeks ago.
Right. I should have articulated a little bit more, but still, you do not want to use E&amp;D as a big revenue source, especially in that amount, because anything could happen. And that's if we don't need it, if we don't dip into it.
But it gets certified before you use it.
It gets, so it gets certified for the prior, so they have to certify June 30th, 2018's amount, FY17's, FY18's amount. So that's what gets certified. So for FY20's budget, you're using FY19's.
Certification, but that we won't get until June?
Well, we'll, no, we'll know our E&amp;D certification in the winter of this year, which is what we have. It means that it could be 940 plus the $689.
Which we know is, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and that $689 is reserved to fund any amount that we need that FY19's budgeted. And then whatever, and then whatever we use for FY20's is going to come off the FY19 certification.
So you budget it before you have the certification? And then it's either assigned or not? And if you have assigned it and you don't need it, it can go back into?
It automatically goes back into it.
Okay, okay.
But the number is certified based on what you've budgeted?
Correct.
Because by the time it's certified, you've budgeted it, but you haven't had a chance to use it or not yet?
So it's assigned, but it's also, you have your unassigned amount and you have your assigned amount. And then on July 1st, it starts over again. And then because it's so fluid.
Got it.
So Moody's is looking at the unassigned balance as their gauge?
They, well, no, they are looking at both. They're looking at both, but they're seeing the high amount of debt that we have. So, but yes, they're seeing a pattern of the assigned amount, and that's what worries them, that we're depending on E&amp;D as a revenue source.
When you talk about that percentage number, percentage number is based on an assigned. When you say 2.8 or 3.1.
2.8 is based on the unassigned.
2, right.
And that's what, that's what I, that's what I'm concerned about, the 2.1.
And in terms of your point about using the E&amp;D as a revenue source, which obviously we need to get out of doing, based on what you just said here, though, if we use 350 instead of using the $689 and we go to a 3.8% remaining percentage... because that's an increase in our percentage point, that's still seen as positive even though we're still using $350 as revenue, which we don't want to be doing eventually. And we are seeing it as a down step. We've talked, I mean, we talked, we all talked about it last time. If we only use $350 this time, that's kind of a weaning off that we want to keep using less and less, so we're not using it. But there was some concern that should we be using any, right? Is that dangerous to even use any? But what you're saying is even if we use $350 as kind of a midstep, that is seen as positive progress by Moody's because it increases our unbalanced percentage.
3.8 percent, they'll look at favorable based on what we had in the past. I think they'd also like to see either a little bit higher or having some other circuit breaker carryover or something like that.
Something else.
But it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Because conversely, we got into the situation from a different pattern. So we're now changing the pattern.
If we're reversing the pattern.
They waited to see over the course of a year and a half, two years.
Yep.
So you said if everything goes as planned, that's carried--
Right.
There's nothing, right? And 3.8 to 3, what's the difference in dollars?
Uh, $339,000. So when I say everything goes to plan, that just means we know when we have a budget and we cannot over, we cannot overspend the budget unless we increase it by using E and D. So no matter what, if this budget passes, we have $34,999,000. Now, what, I budgeted the revenue piece to the penny to match that. And in that, $350,000 is coming from E and D. Now, if there's something, if something happens and they have, you know, Chapter 70 comes in, they have 9C cuts, and we get less, then E and D is going to be affected. Because, or if, say, there's a $200,000 9C cut, then I can spend the general fund budget by $200,000 less to match it up. So when I say everything goes to plan, it just means I end at zero and the revenue equals exactly the 34,000, which most likely is not 100 percent going to happen. But in theory, that's what the numbers would look like. Kind of some new stuff, right?
No, it's helpful.
Yeah.
It's really helpful.
So you have to be eight times?
Yeah.
Well, I think the questions over the different conversations have been helpful to know what else we needed for information, so.
Well, certainly what to prioritize and where to, you know, what we're evaluating, what the effect of that is, each decision.
So that was some new information. The next one is the new slide. And I've heard a number of comments about this, you know, what are the factors and what are the weights that Moody's considers? It is broad and it's been very general. They're not going to give away their, their secret here. And I have a handout that I can give out--
They have it.
For the OPEB. So basically, what this is saying is that they have provided their methodology for local governance and the general obligation rates. The following chart gives a broad range of factors and weights that determine rate. Economy tax basic accounts for 30 percent. Finances, which is basically fund balance, accounts for 30 percent. Management accounts for 20 percent. And debt pensions combined accounts for 20 percent. Our unfunded obligations, meaning OPEB, is also much less than our debt obligation. So right now, based on our June 30th, 2017 audited ledger, about 86 percent of this 20 percent is debt and the other 14 percent is pension OPEB. And I don't know what that means because they won't tell us. But obviously, in that 20 percent, the debt has a much higher weight than the OPEB. And that's what that now--
So any, any additional debt, borrowing, goes in here, right?
Correct.
Could you, could you back into how much debt we could take on?
They said significant would affect this, significant.
So I was just wondering if we could figure it out?
We, I mean, we, we could try. But when I say significant, they're talking 5, 10, 15 million more in debt, not a one to two little piece. But I know that our debt right now is about $60 million as of last year. And then the OPEB and the pension is, is it nine?
Together, it's $9,000.
Yeah. So that's how to sort of back it in. 86 percent is debt, 14 percent is the OPEB pension line.
And you said we roughly have $50 million, you said, in debt?
60, which has gone down, for this year, $450,000.
It's like $200,000 a month by that year?
It's going down about 200 a year, give or take. And I think our obligation this year is 4.5 million. A little bit smaller than that, 4.7. So unlike the Concord Public School side, the regional side is responsible for projecting the revenue. The following list of items is the revenue we received before we figure out the total assessments to this town. At this time, we are projecting a $33,732 increase in Chapter 70, a $57,369 increase in Chapter 71 transportation. And we are recommending we increase our E and D contribution by 300-- That's a increase, decrease, decrease our E and D contribution by $339,460. We are projecting an $85,000 increase from FY '19's budget amount in interest. We are showing that we receive about $80K miscellaneous revenue. And also, we're projecting a slight $326 decrease in charter reimbursement. But it's important to note that many of these numbers are very preliminary. The governor's budget does not come out until the 4th Wednesday in January. So this is the, our best estimate of the facts known right now.
Jared, is it just me? I thought I heard some of those numbers, what you read and what's on the slide, different? The last few?
He said the increase--
I think interest, he said 85 and it says 100 up there.
Interest is plus 85.
We are projecting an $85,000 increase in interest. So last year, we budgeted $15--
Oh, oh, it was 15, got it, okay, okay.
And then, we're, and then also, we're showing that we receive about $80,000 in miscellaneous revenue. That's a new, that's a result of the zero base, that we said, okay, we can, we can find that we're receiving more revenue and we can purpose it and offset assessments. So the total general fund revenue is $3,634,490. So based on the regional agreement, assessments are dictated by the October 1st enrollment. According to the October 1st enrollment, Concord had 75.25 percent of the enrollment of 903 kids. And Carlisle had 24.75 or 297 percent of the total. So the way that this slide reads, it's a little small, but the operating budget, the number right at the top, does not include debt and does not include transportation. Therefore, we break up the revenue into three sections. The operating budget is $29,702,263. We then, we then reduce that amount by all the state and local revenue that I discussed on that last slide. Therefore, the amount to assess above that Chapter 70 in local revenue is the $26,569,207. All that share, $19.993 million is Concord's and $6.5 million is Carlisle's. We then break out the transportation. Our total transportation expenditures for FY '20 is $757,664. We then reduce the Chapter 71 projection and we come up with the amount to assess of $226,000. And then we break out the debt. The total amount to assess is 4.49 and then Concord's portion is at 3348 and Carlisle's is 10.1. So overall, if you wind up the, the columns of the Concord and the columns of the Carlisle, that's the amount to assess. And then if you add it in, the local revenue, you would come up with the $34,999,000. And the first box at the top is the assessment without debt. In this scenario, Concord's increase would be 5.31 percent. Carlisle's would be 6.51 and overall, it's a 5.61 percent. And then the box below it, all that is doing is adding in the debt, the extra 201,000 or decrease of 201,000, 202,000. So that is the first scenario, that is the recommended scenario.
So can I, can I be rude? Do we need to go through other scenarios if this is the recommended one?
So I was just going to qualify the recommendation a little bit, which might start another discussion and we can look at the other scenarios as reference points, I think, because that's where we're going to end up going. This recommendation is because there were decisions I didn't feel we should make all by ourselves. So the recommendation includes aggressive funding to the OPEB ARC and it also, it also assumes a pretty aggressive reduction in E and D revenue. Those are two pretty substantial cost drivers that we decided was best to pose to you in the most fiscally aggressive, get stable and on track scenario, knowing it would need discussion.
And when you say aggressive, that means an OPEB funding at 785?
Yes.
And an E and D taking $350 as revenue?
Right. And the one final piece, which we've had some conversation about, it assumes that you want to fund purchases of the laptop program rather than leases. And we've shown you some of how that breaks out. There's a bigger line item this year if you're going to purchase, whereas we could drop the line about $200,000 if we go to leases. Over time, you pay for that because you have interest and then you're compounding, the leases obviously carry over year to year for three years and all of that plays out. So that's one other substantial cost driver where there's some choice to be made. I do think this might be a good place to talk on the feedback we've had from the two finance committees because now that we've been in dialogue with both, not all of you have been there for both meetings, so I think it's important to debrief each. I don't know if you all want to share out rather than us doing that. Mary, you were at Carlisle, you mind starting that?
I'll start with you.
Oh, okay.
Because you have the context for both.
Sure, so, you know, I think in Carlisle, we had a pretty solid conversation. This was the big discussion point. I think they saw that percentage increase of 6.51 percent to them. And we're quite concerned about managing that as a, as a fund increase for this year. I think then we talked a lot about OPEB and had some pretty significant discussion. And there's, there's a different urgency, I think. You give me better words, Mary, if you see there are any of you who are there. A different urgency in Carlisle than we've heard in Concord because--
About OPEB.
About OPEB. And I think it's philosophical, but I think it's fiscal too. And whether the ARC, the ARC hat isn't in Carlisle's other purviews right now. They don't have the money Concord's put away in long-term investing towards the OPEB accountability. And so it's a very different mindset and a different level of priority, I would say. Combined with the 6.51 percent that it takes to, to put this together, there was a definite message to bring back here of concern that that was not a feasible, feasible scenario.
That's right on-- Sorry, can I just clarify what you said before I ask another question? Concern and not feasible are almost two different things. There was, there was concern clearly that they, they said this is not feasible?
It was pretty directed. And I think the communicate, we were having a pretty solid conversation to the point where Mary did a great job saying, I want to be sure we take back your message. The message was go back and say, we don't think we can do that.
Right, okay. That's important.
They have not set a preliminary guideline. There's no numbers attached from their side. They frankly sit and kind of wait Concord out because that's the position they end up in. But it was probably the strongest message I've had in my two years of meeting with them through now the second budget cycle of that number is just not going to work.
And the guideline comes out, when do we know?
They're waiting to hear what Concord's going to do this.
I only added that, I didn't sense that they were drawing a line in the sand. They were simply indicating that we know this process is still underway.
Certainly 6 and 1/2 percent is not sustainable.
Yeah.
Right.
But the, and I think they saw the reduction in OPEB as a, as a distinct possibility to, to reduce this.
To them, that's the little--
That's the answer.
That's the answer, yeah.
Just an aside on, on OPEB, for, for the folks watching on TV, ARC is nothing mysterious. It's a recommended contribution.
Right, it's a recommended formula to maintain your obligations appropriately.
Could you and Jared give a somewhat of a sense of how that's going across the state? I mean, this is a big conversation. And from Moody's report, they said we were at the highest, if not the highest, in our contributions. I mean, so also some perspective?
Yeah.
Go ahead, regional school districts? Not many of them are funding it.
A year ago, can I interrupt? Because a year ago, we surveyed the other local regional school districts. Acton, Boxborough's been pretty on top of this. They have, they had $3 million about a year ago, so they're, they're pretty assertive. LS, minimal, hundreds of thousands. Dover Sherburne had nothing, North Rose Southborough had nothing. So we are comparatively, I think Moody's is accurate to say that for a district of our size, because we had about similar balances with AB, which is, you know, compared to the high school, in quite a difference, we were in the best shape.
I have a question on the, the-- I understand the 6.51 percent increase is problematic, but isn't the actual experience year over year the 4.97? Because of the decrease in--
Yes.
Debt. So that is the--
Overall.
Overall, but I think the guy, when they talk about the guidelines, they're talking about without debt.
The other, just on the OPEB thing statewide, there's a change in Gatsby that you will now have to carry that pension liability on your balance sheet. So that's going to start to show up in, in numbers around the state. Whether it has an effect or not is going to depend on how officials in the town explain it to their townspeople and whether or not that causes a change in what people want to do. But it'll, it'll be much clearer what the, what the future liability is from OPEB than it has been in the past. It'd be a little harder to hide--
My final takeaway from Carlisle--
Not show it, not hide it, not show it.
The final takeaway I would say is that in prioritizing, E and D would be the priority from their perspective versus funding OPEB to the ARC.
And that's, that's in response to Moody's, right? I don't think any of us want to do anything to put the rating at risk.
And we all, I mean, I think even our last meeting, we all, at least you read that that's a huge priority here. I mean, I think we're unanimous in that. E and D's got to be a focus to get, make sure our Moody's rating gets stable again.
And then do we want to talk about the Concord feedback last thing? A lot of you were there and a lot of them are here too, so I don't know. I, I think it was a healthy dialogue that had a lot of listening going on and learning and talking on some of these same issues. I didn't leave with as a definitive direction as we ended up with in Carlisle, but we've talked with them a lot on a number of these topics. So we know OPEB's important. I think they're certainly responding with a serious intent to take on the E and D issue as well. I think we know quite exactly as a group where they stand, but certainly the individual comments and questions last night indicate that.
Of course, this Thursday is going to be--
Correct. Tomorrow, yeah, there's--
Very important and informative, so.
And just to review for everyone, because you were specifying that the guideline is without debt. So what we have-- So what we have is 5.31% and their guideline is 4.27, correct? That's without debt.
Six, 4.26?
4.27.
What is it? 4.27?
4.27.
Right.
Which means again that we're a little over a percentage point off, which is not as big of a gap as we've had in the past, at least.
I just, I'm going to ask Jared to show the other two scenarios just as points of reference. So if you could just go to this slide for two and then three.
So what this slide shows is what the Level Fund OPEB and the Level Fund E and D would do. So again, 689 is an E and D contribution. Instead of 785,000 for OPEB, it was 600,000. And that brings it drastically down to Concord at 3.25, overall 3.54, Carlisle 4.42.
What's the E and D revenue contribution there?
689.
That's not cutting it.
And this was more a measure of if everything, if we stabilized some of the variables, could we get a sense of the zero-based work that we had done? And to just neutralize that was really why we ran those numbers, not because they're the recommendation.
To me, that's an important point because it would show really the benefits of zero-based budgeting.
Of the zero base, yeah.
Aside from everything else, apples to apples, as close to apples to apples comparisons. So, great work.
Equalize some other things. And that includes the laptops, which is going from leasing to buying, which creates quite a bump. And even with that bump, it's at 3.25 because of the zero base. So that does show the value of the zero base.
That's full purchase of the laptops.
That's full purchase, yeah.
It is.
And then the last scenario, we just wanted to see, what if we basically cut it in half? Instead of doing E and D at 350 or 689, we budgeted at 525,000. In OPEB, instead of budgeting it at 785 or 600, we cut it in half and budgeted at about 692. And we just picked this number and it came out right below the Concord.
Jared calls me and he goes, "You're not going to believe this was coincidence."
So Concord would be 4.26, Carlisle 5.45, and the total was 4.55.
So, just in terms of presentation, where is, in these scenarios, where's the OPEB?
Good question.
So right here. So this is scenario number three.
Right.
And right here is the OPEB, I mean, I'm sorry, E and D.
That's E and D.
OPEB is general fund. So the way that you would notice this in this number is our operating budget at the top, that actually decreased by 92.5. So the original budget was 34,906. Then our total budget down at the bottom also decreased and that will be our asking. And even in scenario number two, the budget, I'm going the wrong way. In scenario two on the sheet, you'll notice the budget decreased even more because we decreased in OPEB by 185,000.
So just in terms, I don't know how many more times you have to do this show. And the three, like, I think that would be, just whether it's something at the top that's... Here's the definition of this scenario.
Sure.
Really simple.
So you watch them travel through the scenarios.
Yeah. So E and D is isolated.
Yeah.
I mean, OPEB's isolated.
And what I find is very helpful is what Jared showed us last time, which is if we sit here and say, "Well, okay, well, how about if we do this much OPEB and this much out of E and D?", Jared can plug them in and give us new numbers. And to me, that's the most useful thing is...
Absolutely.
All right, let's figure out what numbers we think we need and what does that mean? And the magic budget leprechaun gives us a new number.
But that's not easy to save for here.
With the spreadsheet.
Right.
If we add the laptops, then we've added every known new initiative other than the very agreed-upon spend changes we're making programmatically. Would that be correct?
Which are not a new cost.
Exactly.
Those are pretty much a lot. Right.
Yeah, there's very little new here. It's stabilizing what we have. Local service.
And then one more request is, I've got an older version of this. We should probably post this.
Yes.
Or some version of...
Yeah, this one would be, I finished at like 6:29.
I wasn't going to tell them. Don't tell Mary's store stuff.
Literally, we were coming off the feedback from last night and so spent the day working on just adding the information.
Because I'm looking at the old ones and...
Yeah.
And I know the numbers haven't changed dramatically.
Sure.
Just we need something that we release to the public and is clearly understood without...
Yep.
Thank you.
My question on process, are we debating these scenarios in our plan now?
We could have done all this later on, but we did it in the public hearing. Could have done all this later on.
Right.
Yeah, no, let's get to questions from the audience. Dean, I think you've been very patient. We appreciate it.
Everybody get ready.
Yeah, all right. Discussion wants to be...
Oh, I know. I'm just saying for this next.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, a member of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Finance Committee Guidelines Subcommittee, and I'm here speaking on behalf of both of those entities. We have been working diligently for about a year and a half now on a general concept that we're calling a sustainable tax, rate of tax growth. Now, the budgets in the schools are a significant driver in our tax burden in Concord. The town of Concord doesn't know a lot about other things. They buy land, they take on other warrant articles that have costs. So it's not entirely a function of what we do here. I think we've had a great relationship this year. We've attended your budget subcommittee meetings. We've observed, we've thrown in a comment here and there when called upon. I would say that this has been a better relationship than we've had for quite some time. However, the tax rating in the town is bumping up against some things that the Finance Committee is finding is getting anxious about. And you folks are anxious about your E and D level and your Moody's calls. We're kind of anxious about our living limit capacity and we're anxious about our own free cash, which you guys consider people, a slush fund compared to comparison. But we are facing rising tax rates that are eating away at our levy limit capacity and they are not sustainable. We have charted the rise in our taxes and since 2007, those have gone up 46%. It's a very high number. It is the kind of number that drives some people out of town, puts stress on families and we are trying to take steps to alert each of the budgeting entities in the community to the situation that we're facing. It is quite possible that within the next two to three years, we'll be facing a prop two and a half over on. So when we're looking at budgets that look like 4% to 5% these sorts of things are going to drive us to the polls. And we have been lucky. We've had growth that has risen our levy limit capacity so that we've not faced these kinds of things. But our taxes are still going up at a pretty striking rate relative to other metrics that are of macroeconomic nature. So we've taken up this initiative to come up with a planning tool that we can try to aid schools, town, et cetera, in providing guidance for what, not just a year-over-year guideline where this year we want this to be the guideline, but a planning tool that will give you a sense of what we think is sustainable. We're looking at, you know, creating a metric. We preliminarily voted our recommendation last night and that's probably going to be finalized at the Finance Committee meeting coming up. Our goal in creating this tax rate, sustainable rate of taxes, is to provide an advanced notice of how you can plan going forward, not what are we going to do this year? But as you take on responsibilities that have multi-year liabilities, contracts, anything that might be long-term, you have to think about what we're going to call a sustainable rate of tax growth. So we anticipate that the way this will work is that sometime in July, we will meet, we will set our sustainable rate of tax growth that we would expect to be sustainable over the next five years. And that will become part of the annual letter that we send out in which we ask for information. So at the outset of the budgeting process, where we are asking for, you know, budget drivers and questions about how the budget's being constructed, it will also have information about what we consider to be a sustainable rate of tax growth for the next five years. And that's not the guideline that we set for that individual group, but that is what we would like to see as a, we're calling it a guardrail, a way of giving you some, you know, something to work with as you start to, you know, anticipate anything that you're doing and how that's going to fit with what we can support as a town. So I'm just here to give you that insight. It's something that I think we're going to set up as a policy within the Finance Committee, so it's likely that this is going to be year after year. This is going to become part of our process. And I have to thank my Chair, Tom, who, when he was sitting in my seat as the Guidelines Subcommittee Chair, started this about a year and a half ago. He's now the Chair of the Finance Committee and it's really his baiting. So I'm just here to just talk it up. I welcome questions, anything you want to ask me about this, but this is what we expect to be doing.
I have a question while I hear this, somewhat for you, Dean, and somewhat for all of us even. I feel like this is something, and first of all, thank you for bringing this to us because I think it's so important that we're all on the same page here, looking at it commonly. You've brought it to us a couple of times now, kind of as a comment. And I think we all have it in the back of our heads and we know that you're working on it right now and through December, we're all pretty focused on the current budget, so I haven't given it all that much attention yet.
We're just trying to use this bully pulpit that's available during the public hearing to just say, "By next July, we're actually going to publish a real number" and you're going to have, it's going to be part of the letter that goes in.
Exactly. And so I'm saying that's very helpful. I appreciate it. What I'm thinking is, I feel like it would be great if we could have more discussion together on this at a time. Obviously, for us, it would be after December, once we're through this part of the budget discussion. But is it possible or does it make sense for us to call some type of a joint meeting? A meeting where this is the topic of discussion, where we're in session, you guys are all in session, and we can all have a discussion about what this looks like? Invite Carlisle Finance Committee too, so that we can all be on the same page. Is that something that everybody would be interested in? I would love to engage more on the topic because it's so important.
We're happy to talk to you, but I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, "This is our job. This is what we do and you do what you do and we do what we do." And it's likely that, you know, that that kind of conversation will be sort of a push-pull sort of thing, like, "Can it be higher or can we use a different thing?" And we've held a public hearing on this last year. We got citizen feedback at the public hearing. We were having internal discussions within our own. We have a subcommittee set up. It's actually a working group within the Finance Committee for this, which makes recommendations to the Finance. So we have a very formal, you know, go-forward process for creating this. And we'd be happy to sit down with you, but it's likely that we'll say, "Thank you for your input" and we'll go off and do what we do.
And that's fine. I wasn't suggesting that we would give you, you know, the number. I wasn't going to take it up. Believe me, Dean, I don't want that job. More than, I think it would be great to be able to give you some of that feedback, just for us to be able to say, "Okay, this is important work. Here are the factors that we would love to be taken into account as you're doing that work." Or, I don't know, we can talk about the best form for it. I guess what I'm saying is I'm glad you're here bringing it to us and I would love for us to be able to have more discussion or engagement about it, if possible.
Well, I welcome that, Heather. I have to say, I'll be frank, I appealed to the Chair of the region and said, "Can we just come and be, you know, an agenda item on your meeting?" I was rebuffed. So we're not exactly, you know, this is not exactly a fun topic apparently that you welcome at this particular juncture. But I've got a public hearing and so I'm taking my opportunity to speak to you. So I'm just saying, we've had a good, strong relationship this year and I don't want it to be fractured. But this was not, this was not something that was welcomed at this meeting, let's just say.
I would guess that's because of time. I don't think...
We're going to be here till after 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Dean, can I ask one favor? And I think what our job should be is to stay in touch and follow, but I tried to find this handout online for a while yesterday to read it, that you handed out to us, because I don't know where my copy was. Is that something we can find?
We can make it available. There's no problem in making it available.
Okay, so if we're going to discuss it, I also, I think people need to understand it.
Yeah, it's fine. The main thing that we've been handing out, quite frankly, is just a chart that shows the rate of increase in the Concord tax base, you know? And then that line is plotted against four other macroeconomic indicators. A regional CPI for this area, a compensation survey indicator of employment cost for like the, I want to say the Cambridge, Newton, you know, this area is very localized employment cost index, as well as a five- and 10-year T-bill and a T-bond. And those numbers are all way below what our tax...
Right, but that's very complicated if this is put together. So I'm just asking that we have...
Yeah, I'm happy to provide it, even in spreadsheet form. You're welcome to it. I'm not hiding. We're not hiding.
No, I'm not suggesting. I'm just saying I wanted to further educate myself.
Yeah. And we welcome any input, but we're at the point where on Thursday night, we are like this close to, we're going to vote on exactly what metrics we're going to be providing as we go forward with this. Those could change. We obviously are a dynamic institution and we can change our policy and change what we do. But for now, we're pretty locked and loaded for the next year's letter. It's likely to have a metric that we're already set on.
So as a closing comment, I would like to suggest that we pick up this discussion at a future school committee meeting and come to some consensus. And hopefully, and you have been extremely available at school committee meetings, we could maybe take a closer look at what might make sense.
It's fine. We're open to it.
I don't really understand what that...
I don't know if it's a...
I mean, it doesn't sound to me like this is not a discussion.
No, no.
This is they're doing this and it'll be information...
As a school committee, we will discuss it.
Whether we have some pizza.
Which we'll do in any event. I don't know if we want to wind this piece up, but I'll be particularly interested in what this does beyond the tool you described. As I understand it, it's a tool that gives us a five-year look at your guardrails that you would promote for the town. And I think that's well and good. You communicate that clearly. I'll be very curious about the context and by that, what I mean is the other factors or indicators you're going to lay out that you're going to put your guardrails next to, regional CPI and so on. Because I think that contextual picture that gives us your five-year guardrails is going to be very informative.
Just to be, you know, clear where we came out last night in the recommendation motion that was passed, we're going to have a number for a five-year planning number. It's just going to be, here's a percentage number that we're looking at as a five-year planning number. And each year, we will revisit that number and it will be reset each year. There will be a new five-year number when we issue the following years. So it's, you know, it's a, you know, if inflation starts to become 8%, we're obviously not going to sit there with a number that we gave four years ago. It's something that we will revisit each year. That's the idea, but it's... But it's basically, here's a growth rate for the next five years. If you're making plans that are beyond the current budget, this is a number we want you to try to think about.
Okay. Any other public comments?
All right, so I think I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for Concord.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And can I have a motion to close the Regional School Committee budget hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we will continue with our regular business of the Regional School Committee. First up is public comments. I notice we have a student representative.
I didn't stand here.
Either way.
Should I use the mic? It's the one with the green light on. Can you slide it over? There you go.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lee, and I'm one of the CCHS School Committee representatives. And now that we're almost halfway done with the school year, a lot has been going on. So to start off, the sports have been a very big part of lives of students at CC. The Boys' Varsity Cross-Country Team recently won Division One State Championship, which is very exciting. The Girls' Cross-Country Team was the runner-up and came in a solid second place. Overall, both teams had very good seasons. The All-States competition for both boys and girls was at Stanley Park this year. The Girls' Varsity Soccer Team also did very well this year and remained undefeated for the majority of their season. And the CC Football Team played their final game of the season on Thanksgiving against Bedford High School. This event is always very exciting. Even though it was an away game, there were still many supportive Concord and Carlisle fans that went to watch the game. The Varsity Coed Cheerleading Team won DCLs at Methuen High School on November 1st and proceeded to compete at the state competition the following week. There is also a lot happening with music at CC. The Fall Concert just occurred on November 7th with orchestra, band, jazz band, and various other student ensembles, all of which were conducted by Mr. Gresko. There was also a Fall Chorus Concert, which occurred in the beginning of November as well and was conducted by Ms. Smith. There is also a lot of preparation going on for the upcoming concerts, such as the Winter Concert, which includes different musical groups that will be playing. In December, there is a Prism Concert as well. And the CC Orchestra, Jazz Band, Rematory Band, and Concert Band will all be playing in it. Music awards were also given out this past week, with multiple chorus, orchestra, and band students being accepted into districts, with some setting school records and making it into All-States as well. So the school play is also another large event that is coming up, and it features student actors from all four grades. The play is called Metamorphosis and was written by Mary Zimmerman. It is premiering in the CC Auditorium, and it includes multiple Greek myths and is about Greek figures, including gods and goddesses. The actors and technicians are putting in a lot of time and effort to make this play as good as possible, all for the enjoyment of the audience. And the annual Thanksgiving Senior Luncheon occurred recently and included more than 40 student volunteers who served food and set up tables for senior citizens around town and also from nearby towns. CC students also played music for the senior citizens, and overall, the luncheon was definitely a very successful. This past week, before Thanksgiving break, CCHS had a Spirit Week, which was planned by the Student Senate and was very successful. It involved numerous sites and activities to show school spirit. During the three days of school before Thanksgiving, there was a cornhole tournament and the annual Girls' Powderpuff Football Game on Tuesday night, where junior girls and senior girls compete against each other. At Powderpuff, WIQH Radio did a live broadcast during the game. The game was very exciting and drew in a large fan base of people from all four grades. During the Spirit Assembly, which was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, Mr. Mistrillo and a few other faculty members gave speeches. And many student groups and teams also performed, such as the Varsity Cheer Team, Dance Team, and different music groups. There was even a three-legged relay race, which was added just this year, all of which would not have been possible without the two master ceremonies, known as MCs, Seniors Lily Langredt and Spencer Torres. The Student Government is also currently in the process of planning holiday activities, such as the annual Candy Can Giveaway, where students are able to purchase candy cans for their friends and peers and even teachers. And they can also write a personal handwritten letter as well. The candy cans are delivered the day before winter break by members of the Student Government, along with volunteer students from various different grades. So overall, there's definitely a lot going on at CC, and students are being kept busy and are definitely super engaged for the new harvest.
Super.
Wow. That is awesome. That is a lot. I know.
So I heard sports. I heard music and arts.
Theater, yeah.
Does anybody study? No, I think it's fabulous. It's terrific. I just, I have to put in a personal plug for the Prism Concert on December 15th. Mr. Gresko and all the band students called the Non-Stop Musical Kaleidoscope. It is not to be missed. It's cool.
The 15th?
December 15th.
So the music comes out. You're from all around the auditorium, and it's just amazing.
I think it's brought all the diversity of activities. It's like, everybody's busy having fun. That's great.
That's terrific. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry we made you wait a while.
Thank you very much. Any recognitions or...
So the holiday threw my plan a little for recognitions, but I'm going to just piggyback on the comments because the day before Thanksgiving, and all of last week really, just so many amazing things. I mean, she didn't mention the cornhole tournament that, again, Mike Mistrillo and Nancy Slocum won. Champions, you know? You can't dethrone them. They're fun to watch. They really are fun to watch. And the kids they played against were a lot of fun to watch, too. And then Wednesday, I just traveled school to school. Within two hours, I had been at the High School Spirit Assembly, at the all-school meeting at Willard, where there's just song and great things going on. And then at the kickoff, and Turkey Trot at Thoreau, which I had not experienced last year because the weather hadn't cooperated. And in between all of that, watched eighth graders read to younger kids at Alcott and Willard both. And, I mean, it just was such a lively, engaged place. You know, some of the comments I heard at the high school, there used to be a place where kids were trying to skip out because it's the last thing of the half-day. And nobody's leaving. They're having too much fun. So I just, kudos, because none of that goes off easily, and it's all a lot of work. And when it goes really well, it's so easy to take that part for granted. But just what a great, what a great place to be last week. So kudos to everybody involved, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you for updating us.
We would love to talk more about this kind of stuff.
I know. We would have talked about this a whole night.
So thank you. We're glad you came.
Thank you.
Okay, reading of the minutes is next for November 13th. If anyone has a chance to take one...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 13th.
Second. I did have, hold on a second.
Discussion?
I had a point of discussion aggression. I have to find them. Sorry. I haven't pulled them right up. Where are they? Oh, here we go. Okay. Under Section 3 Reports for Discussion.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify. So about one, two, three, four, five lines down.
Yep.
It says noting that the required actions are things that have... This is about CMS, things that have to be dealt with. But are not a list of things to be done with in code. I just wanted to add, these are things that have to be dealt with if we were to stay in the buildings for a long period of time.
Okay.
Let me add that in. And then on the next line, same thing. She stated that the items that need to be dealt with... Oh, okay, no, that one is the same. Once we clarify that, the items that need to be dealt with in the, I would say, in the shorter term, have been on their radar. Just so that we're clarified. There are things that need to be done if we're staying a long term, and then things that would need to be done short term.
Good.
And I think that was it.
And if I'm correct, you talked about short term being three to five, more or less, but we weren't being held to that.
Exactly. Whereas long term was if we were staying in the building for 10-plus years. And we're hoping that doesn't happen.
So can I have a motion to approve the minutes as edited?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
I think we had a motion, don't we have to? What do you do when you want to...
Withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my original motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
And then I made the other one.
Okay, that's been seconded. Go ahead. Smith is your rap here.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairs and liaisons reports?
Oh, I can report that I was with the League of Women Voters Education Committee. Black one every once in a while, sometime before Thanksgiving. I'm losing track. But it was a great discussion. I think some of it come up. But I went through what we had, budget information so far. I think we had just presented the budget. So kind of went through a high level of that with them. We had some great feedback. There were probably five or six people there. And there was terrific feedback that this is just a very clear... It's been a clear process. It's a clear budget. It's really helpful, the way you presented it, Jared, and the way we're all talking about it. So that was great. And they were also talking about the idea, and Lori has mentioned it, but they're going to host a First Friday event in January. They do a First Friday that's information about some topic in town. It's going to be education-oriented, and they've reached out to Lori now. I can't believe all the people that you have there for that day. It's incredible.
What is the First Friday?
The First Friday, so it's actually January 4th. It's going to be at 9:15 at the Fowler Library in West Concord. And all together with feedback that, you'll have to help me, but the title became Educating the Whole Child? Something like that. How the schools are supporting...
Support, yes.
Supporting an inclusive, yeah, environment, something like that. It's about educating the whole child. And Lori's already gotten together, I think, with every principal and Andrew from Medco and...
A guidance counselor.
And a guidance counselor. And it's going to be an incredible panel discussion, I think.
I've got the notepad.
Yeah.
Educating the whole child, creating an inclusive, supportive environment in our schools.
There we go.
The what time on the 4th?
9:15. At the Fowler Library.
For the Fowler.
Yep.
Always well attended.
Yes.
And they also talked about the civics education work that they're doing. Again, it's outside of our schools, but they're doing great civics education stuff with kids in town in Concord and Carlisle. That was that one. I think that's the only liaison report I have.
Other liaison reports?
I can report briefly on public television. The staff at high school, now in-town employee, the number's two instead of the earlier three. There were some part-timers as well. We have one tonight. Thank you. Who joined that staff. We don't know when transmission can go out of here live yet. They haven't given up on that. But we don't know. And our Public Information Officer for the Town of Concord is... I don't know if you noticed, Lori's going to take up part-time residence at the high school.
I don't.
But she's integrated into that media network anyways, so it's no surprise.
Okay, and I attended the FinCon meetings in Carlisle and Concord. Carlisle was November 19th, and Concord was last night. And one common theme, other things have already been said, but one common theme to me was that those members of the two FinCon committees were very happy about the increased transparency, the clearness of the presentation, and in turn, being able to come to a good conclusion in terms of their discussions, having real numbers, and also appreciating what they may see going forward, you know? So it was well done by both Jared and Lori. Superintendent report?
Great, thank you. So quick updates. I won't spend too much time on any of these. We are looking to put services in place for some of the students at the high school that we've identified through the RTI screening process. I did attend the first meeting of the Middle School Special Education Team. They're diving into the review and beginning that discussion of what that might mean to them in terms of reorganizing. Tomorrow, I have a date of December 12th in my report, our actual first meeting of the CTA Evaluation Committee, which is a joint meeting of administration and representatives from the CTA. Per the regulations, I think I've mentioned this in my goals, you're supposed to be ongoing, having an ongoing review of the educator process, the evaluation process, and reflecting on it and collaboratively tweaking it without having to wait for the contract to be bargained and all of that. So we're getting the structure in place. We actually have our first meeting tomorrow. The second meeting is December 12th. So we're looking forward to having that, I think mutually beneficial discussion. Student Wellness, the middle school, really the middle school, I will be there, has been asked to present at a conference next week hosted by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents entitled Social Emotional Learning: Advancing Cultural Proficiency. So we'll be on a panel with Andover and Chelsea and the DESI representative to talk on our combined work of, really for the middle school, it's challenge, success, and cultural competency, and how those two are complementing each other, and some of the experiences that the middle school staff. We'll have teachers there with Justin, as well as, I expect, a couple of kids, and talk on some of how those initiatives are playing out. So we were thrilled to be asked and glad to share. I'm looking forward to hearing Andover and Chelsea and see what we can learn from them, too. School safety, as far up to the meeting, we are making plans for reliable walkie-talkie communication, staff ID badges. We met this morning with SRO Camilleri and looked at an updated draft of the emergency plan document. So we're in really good shape, thanks to some of the tools that are available now. We're not starting from scratch. We're working off of a template and tweaking it to what we needed to be. So that's really exciting to get that done in a quite efficient way. You'll also see that especially the CPS Capital Plan includes some security upgrades to two elementaries in the middle school. We did Alcott's last summer, so now we want to keep phasing in the security camera purchases. And we're going to talk more on the middle school tonight in terms of capital. I've been really trying to support them in their work on some major new approaches here coming, as you're well aware, with reconfiguration and the schedule that has to complement that. So Justin's led a couple of in-house committees, and I've just been attending regularly, trying to hear their needs. It's been actually a great, I think, liaison role that I can talk on the bigger picture of work we're doing, share back to them, while we talk on the more detailed events of how all of it needs to play out. So we're trying to really all stay on the same page and support one another. You'll see, too, that tonight, when we get to the CPS Capital Plan, the lion's share outside of the telephone system is being allocated towards middle school improvements, trying to make the best of those environments over the next four to five years, knowing that's the minimal time we will be in there. In terms of engagement and instructional innovation, I've been reaching out to some of my prior work with Apple and talking with them on what they can bring us, bringing in other tools that we can look at, looking at some speakers. This is all with the leadership team. You'll remember, my goal really is my work with them this year. I think for the most part, it will be a second half of the year discussion since we've been on cultural competency and security and a number of other topics. But I am looking forward to those enriching discussions. Cultural proficiency, we had a really great journey. Jared and I went and met with all the bus drivers last week and talked on cultural competency and especially their management of the month of December. And I think it was very well received, some great questions and dialogue. And I think it was great to include, they're so important in this conversation. So I think, one, to include them, but, two, to make sure our kids all feel included on every part of their school experience, including the bus. So we were grateful for that. I had to share a moment where I was at the Alcott PTG meeting, and a mom from a particular background stopped me on the way in and said, "I knew you would want this. Here's the list of religious holidays for our community because I knew you'd want to share it with the staff so that when our kids need the day off, teachers will know it's coming." And I don't know, I just thought that might be better than most any other data point I could have. Somehow, we're making those connections, and it was great. And then finally, I have a coffee visit scheduled at Concord Can. That's follow-up to that sustainability meeting that I went to with the town. We've talked on the forum and also the really just great events here last week and how much fun it was. So thank you.
Awesome.
One other update while we're talking on the TV studio. I did hear from Kate Hodges at Concord Town Hall there. I have the draft that they're working off of between the two town halls.
I forgot about that.
So they're working at it. I'm going to bring the agreement back to you once they're finished with the MOA between the two municipalities. So there's work still happening there, and then we'll come back to what we left, where we left off.
So there was no correspondence, right?
We had one, and I don't know if we should have mentioned it last time. Because of the School Committee email list that's going out, we did have one response to, I think, the agenda from last time. So I had a nice dialogue back and forth with a community member about some of our online opportunities for kids at the high school. We talked mostly VH, Virtual High School, and some of the options we offer kids there. And we did get one back today, asking some further follow-up questions about today's agenda. So certainly, we'll engage with folks. So certainly, we'll engage with folks if they respond. I don't have the latest count for you. I'll have to do that tomorrow.
That's okay.
People are reading clearly, which is great.
Yep. Next item is reports for discussion. We will talk about the campus oversight subcommittee update.
So can I frame what my thought was for this meeting? And many of you are at the subcommittee/joint meeting last week when the engineers were here to give us their preliminary findings. I was going to pull the presentation up and really go to the... You can tell me if you want to talk on any other pieces, just to... That one slide where they start to show they can map out a number of the different pieces. Can you just scroll, Erin, for a minute? So they've been assessing all of the different things they've asked. They confirmed the roadway needs work. They've been studying the landfill limitations. And now they've started to look at what the options are for the landfill. Can you go one more?
Ten or eleven, is that what you're looking for?
Maybe it's earlier now. Go back, sorry.
It's earlier, it's the first.
It's the first one of that.
Picture there, that one?
Yeah. So I think, thank you to blow it up. What I thought we might want to just debrief on, because this was the bulk of our conversation, and I think we're just trying to keep it fresh, especially as we then talk timelines for the next few weeks and the Warren article and all of that. I think what intrigued most of us was that they're presenting some options where there is potential for a track, potential for some parking. We do have impervious surface discussions to continue to have, and I think they left here with more information to work off of. But it seemed like one had not excluded the other, which was good news. So I think of the major things we've asked them to look at, the paving, they're confirming the need there, no questions about that. And then still fleshing out what the options are. We did talk about a six-lane track with an eight-lane straightaway on one side. I followed up immediately with the people we consider experts, which are our coaches, who thought that was more than enough. They reinforced what we'd heard. The limitation is not for the smaller meets. You can have a two to three district meet here and be fine. If you want to host a district meet at the level of your portion of Massachusetts or the state meet, then you need the eight-lane track. And frankly, there's other issues to that that we started to talk on, which would be bleachers and bathrooms and things we don't have room for. And anyway, so I think we're in pretty good standing if we're able to accomplish the possibility of a six-lane. The one other thing we talked about, I don't know, Erin, do you mind moving the slides one more time, was the bathrooms and the options Gail is seeing for us. Keep going, keep going, we'll tell you when to stop. This is then playing with the impervious surface options and what was previous parking lot is part of the impervious surface and what would overlap differently. So the pink is the previous parking lot, and they're going to keep looking at how to lay things out to maximize that. They flushed out a potential hockey rink. I don't know how much you want to talk on that tonight. I think they were trying to help us know how big of a project that really is. There's the amenities building that we do need to consider down at the football field, because we are not code compliant, per se. We've been given quite a bit of leeway from Concord, town of Concord, to use portable toilets for the time being. But based on their recommendation and our homework on the codes, this is the specs they're giving us for the assumed, you know, you've got to be careful assuming anything, that the state might consider the variance down to 50% of the required by code based on the seating capacity of the stadium. You can see it's still a pretty good amount of facilities. And I think as we talked in that meeting, we were coming up $750,000, $800,000 for a 1,600 square foot building.
And they also had said they've never seen any reduction beyond 50% to what's been approved, and even that took considerable petition.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just sort of pointing out that we kind of looked at it as a way we could get even half that, and it's probably unlikely, and at best, it would be a 50% reduction. It sounded like to me.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I agree. It was kind of going somewhere else.
Oh.
I didn't want to...
No, go ahead, Erin, go ahead.
I'm worried, again, about the whole timing of what we'll know by the time we have to make important decisions for the Warren article. The number, but we're kind of assuming a 50%, we're going to get this 50% waiver. There's no way we're going to know that in a couple of weeks, right?
No. So what we've learned, and Brian's here. Brian's here for the rest of the night to talk capital. We know we need designs to submit for the waiver. So you have to work backwards, almost. You can't assume the waiver, but you also have to get a design made for them to consider it. So it's the chicken and the egg, yeah.
But all of these projects, right, a parking lot? I mean, I guess it depends on what we're going to ask for funding and what we can do now and in the future and what... I don't know how much Gail is working with the town departments to... And I know they can't approve something that doesn't quite exist. But can we do this? Yes, it fits on a footprint basis, but what does that mean for drainage? What does that mean for...
Right, so I think...
Famous impervious surface.
I think we, I personally didn't know that we were going to have all of that settled in time for the Warren articles. I think my hope was that we'd have solid numbers to work with, which Gail will be here December 11th to bring those preliminary numbers to us. I think we've gotten their agreement to do that. The impervious surface was going to be a discussion that I expected was going to happen after submission of the Warren articles between the December and April town meeting, because there's a lot of work to there. We've had the folks here from the town to talk on history, and we're at 18% now. It used to be 22% now. We're working with CCF Play to see if there's any additional there. They're meeting with the town, and they've got their ASBILs and to see if that permit's got any room left in it. I guess I never was, I never thought we'd have all of that settled. I think we were hoping for the short-term goal to be the costs more solid so we could make that decision and then spend January, February, March really working through those impervious surface issues and watershed issues and some of that.
Yeah, just to add to that, my expectation was to know what a plan could look like to not preclude one idea than another, knowing we weren't going to do them all, but how would they fit? Two, to have a sense of cost, so that would obviously be prohibitive in some cases, you know, because, one, we don't have any, you know, anticipated costs yet to know what it would be to actually build a track or actually build a hockey rink, which would help also decide. So costs, impervious surface, and permits and all that would have to be in conjunction with the town in, you know, months, at least months, I would say, of after approval to maybe do a said project. Is that sort of what you're...
So we talked about the project, like paving and lighting is important to us, parking is important. And I don't want to, potentially in that order. So would we put, would we ask for money for both of those projects? For as one article, as two articles, either or, both, what have you? And are we really going, parking bothers me most, right, because of where we might put it and how close it is to the landfill and what that means, impervious surface? Do we have, without knowing what the town's going to require of us, are we going to know what that's going to cost? I mean, that's what we've asked Gail to give us. But without all of these sign-offs, is there still risk that we, these numbers aren't good enough?
So I think the challenge is the town's going to have the same issue as the state with the codes. They can't sign off on a plan until there is a plan. So we need to go forward with the money to get those designs made for what the parking would be. Obviously, we're going to do that collaboratively with the town. I think we've come a long way in the last six months to make that a discussion earlier than later. I think you can't, I don't think you can accomplish one without the funding to begin the project.
However, could we at least push the, absent any plans that would require design funds and capital expenditures, could we not push for the impervious surface percentage without any other information on the table? Because that doesn't change, that's...
No, I don't think, you're asking for them to approve an impervious percentage number?
Yeah.
Without a plan? I think it's the same thing.
I think the feedback we've had is they take it based on the request we were making, not in a generic way.
So if anything, that can trigger what is known to them right now, in theory, on that problem.
I don't think they would give, I don't think they would make any decision on any of it unless it's a fully...
No, no, I'm not speaking of a decision on any of these potential plans. I'm looking for a number of what is available in that footprint for additional build-out.
Is it 22? Is it...
Can you break that down?
No, I think what you will get before our meeting is what is, what exists. But they're not going to say you can have up to said amount without a plan.
For what projects you choose. They're going to want the project proposal and the plan to go with it to then simultaneously approve the impervious surface required for that particular project. That's the feedback we've had reliably.
So we have to prioritize the projects, assuming that if you do one, you can't do the other, because we may not, if you put up a parking lot, they may say no to the track.
Well, and we've been trying to include them early in these conversations to avoid just that scenario. We've definitely understood that the track, we're going to be down in the teeniest square footage here trying to, that's what we're trying, hoping CCF Play can help is, you know, what do they have left for permitted impervious surface? Looking at the old parking lot, trying to avoid exactly what you just said.
But a final number on the impervious acreage should be available in December.
So I know CCF Play has requested a meeting this week because the ASBILs for their project are available now. So the town needs to sit with them and confirm the number they all agree on, and then I think we're sure.
The table that's in this presentation.
Yes, yes.
What needs to be agreed upon prior to any of our decisions is what is the existing impervious service?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Yes, okay, so yes.
Existing permanent amount, right.
We're very close to that all getting resolved, so...
And add on to that question is, is this facility in or out of the known right now? Because you've heard it both ways. Believe there yet?
I believe there is accounted for.
Because there was a...
Yeah, there was...
When we asked that of Gail Associates, they said, "There is impervious service already accounted for, but this takes up a little bit more." So this was a slight increase over what was already permitted.
Good question.
So most of it was accounted for, but not all.
So the answer is yes, but...
There's always a bunch.
Is there anything imposed on us as to timing on this amenities building?
That's what I'm worried about.
So there has not been formally. I am inferring that there may be permitting issues on other things unless this is a plan that's in the works. I don't know that for sure. That, it keeps coming up every time we...
They didn't talk on other projects. Is it considered in the works if we don't go to town meeting for a Warren article to build an amenities building?
So you can...
And you don't get your...
We have not point-blank asked.
That's crazy, the answer. Well, I don't want to take any bets on town meeting. I don't want to, I want no gambles. I want to know exactly what we're going to ask for.
And what the answer will be.
Because we've got two strikes against us.
Yeah, I understood.
Deserves it. Yeah. So I don't, that's, I'm just terrified that we're, it's... Like, I know we want to rush this and kind of have to, but we've got to have our ducks in a row. And I just don't know, I don't know, but it's, there's a lot of if, then, and chicken and... And I totally get that.
I think, well, I'll speak for myself. I think pretty easily, most of these things are not going to be considered because they're going to take more time and they're going to be much more, you know, much more funding needed, much more. But there's a few that we need to talk seriously about and see if we can, and what the prioritized things are to know enough to take to town meeting this round.
So the two priorities that seem to bubble up at the last subcommittee meeting is paving and lighting and parking. Is that fair to say?
With the dangling question of the impact of...
And I was going to continue. And not that a track would potentially go in in a year or two, but we got to have it in the conversation because it can affect the parking and the parking can affect the track.
Which is the work we've asked Gail to do.
Exactly.
Right. But I don't, I think we've, I'm going to guess again, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think the track was one of our burning Warren articles. And I reread the proposal from a year ago with the campus advisory committee. There's a definitive private funding...
Correct.
Thing that needs to get explored there. That was the intent.
Yeah, what there is, is a paving, lighting, parking that in no way forecloses other possibilities.
That's what it is. That's why parking is part of the conversation, not because it's in an article for town meeting.
But also taking into account the amenity building and what we need to do for that.
And that's really an impervious surface discussion.
It is, exactly.
Well, that's where it starts, yeah. I mean, there's, it's very clear that's not going to be the only permit we need to get because there's going to be water, sewer, you know, there's, there are a whole host of issues that everybody has to, wants to be sure how this gets addressed. So I don't, you know, we're going to have to figure out how we could, you know...
I mean, the typical process, just to, I don't know if this is reassuring or not, because I totally agree with Mary's concerns. Our typical process, we don't get permits for any of our other capital projects till we've done the design work and then submit that. And yeah, sometimes it goes around for a while with whichever board we're working with until we're all in agreement. But at that point, we have a paid architect and engineer on it that can then be part of that discussion with the town officials.
Can I be clear on what we're asking for money for? Because you, a couple of times I've heard "design funds" in my head, and maybe that's not what you're saying.
So often, we ask for both at once. Design funds embedded in the cost of the project. So for example, everything else we've been doing, Septic, reworking Thoreau, Busloop, all of the funds that have been approved at town meeting, first fund the design, correct me if I'm wrong, right? And then the design informs the rest. But when we ask, we usually ask for one total amount.
Just the timing of it.
So in these Warren articles that are coming later, there's nothing in here about funding for any of this?
We left it as dependent on the feasibility study because we didn't want to guess what you wanted to put there.
We'll decide that in December.
I think that was the thought, was to get the cost amounts. I think paving's pretty clear.
Of course, yeah.
And there's no impervious discussion there. The permitting should be straightforward. I think paving and all of that is quite simple. The parking is not surprising, going to be the challenging conversation. We've made progress to see that we can park and get a track potentially on the landfill. I think that was progress in and of itself.
And so then, one article, because we have to figure out how many, how we want to package these at town meeting.
Absolutely.
And you could have two articles and one funding mechanism in the end, right?
Yes.
Right? So let's say one article is for paving and lighting.
Yes. It can still be one bar, right?
Oh, yes, 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 definitely.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out two things we didn't discuss that we kind of had in the advisory, campus advisory committee report. The greenhouse, I don't think we came up for discussion, and the outdoor classroom. So I would encourage, you know, Jared and Laurie to let Gail Associates know that, you know, that is something that should be in their report going forward. And, you know, I spoke to Court about the skateboard park, because again, that's going to be an item that's going to affect the configuration of the track. And Court was involved in the creation or has a lot of historical knowledge about this. So I wanted to see if the committee felt that we would ask Court to do some research so we can, you know, also aspects of maybe moving it, right?
My understanding is that the skate park was gifted to us. And the primary funders were the Rotary Club of Concord, some money from the corner... And the primary funders were the Rotary Club of Concord, some money from the cornerstone fund of your chest, and some nickels and dimes from various sources. And I was one of the volunteers at the time managing the financial end of that project. I don't think it would be difficult to go back to those funders if first we looked at needs around the school district where that skate park could be put to best use. Because right now, it's buried in a corner and very underutilized. It's not...
I know during the campus advisory work, Concord Rec had... There was a time where it came up that they might have a spot for it too.
And this is not poured concrete. A lot of this was assembled on site. Kids with screwdrivers and power hammers and so on.
He was like four at the time.
So with some limited effort, some of those...
That skate park, in my estimation, should not dictate what can go where on that property. And I don't think the funders would be concerned. I think they would simply be grateful that we sought out their advice.
And some...
And see if it's put to good use.
It's put to good use somewhere.
And some of the units can be moved, right? I mean, that is your understanding? All of them can be moved?
Okay.
And I just feel like it could be a lot more...
No, I'm sure it's...
But it was a volunteer project for the most part, so...
But it could be more well-used and appreciated in a different place anyway. Like you said, it's kind of hidden right now.
Okay, so let us do a little homework on what those options might be and...
Because that was... When Gail heard that that might be an option, that was very good news to them. Just frees up the space.
It's the way it sits out in the corner, yeah. To be able to use that space would help.
Okay, are we good on this? Onto all business?
And these are going to be very quick updates. Brian, do you mind updating us on the four projects? The drainage, the, you know, the four.
Yeah, so the drainage we're moving forward with, but the storm put a little stop into that. We're going to coordinate with the engineer and the contractor this week to start that up again, just to get moving on that. So that should be happening fairly quickly. The curb cut we're working on, the engineers has their civil crew out taking the dimensions that you take for the handicap ramp for the nurses area, the curb cut there. So they're actively working on that. The ductwork and mixing valve, the engineer, just as a matter of fact, before I came into this meeting, was sending me an email telling me they're going to update all that for us and get that to us ASAP so we can get that going. So with the ductwork, they just had to... We found a different location to place the ductwork, so he just had to get me some new plans for that. And with the mixing valves, the original plan was a little... It was a couple of years old, so we're looking into electronic mixing valves instead of just regular manual thermostatic mixing valves, which is a lot better for the school in the long run. So they were just modifying those two plans for me so I could get them out, get those bolts going. But again, on the drains, we're going to work on that right away. The contractor had sent me an engineer an email, just, you know, trying to set up a meeting for this week for that. Again, it's just a lot of water down there right now with the rain. So yeah, it's just fog down there.
There's an unusual amount of water down there.
Unusual, yeah, that's pretty...
It's really a lot.
And we're... We're having a little problem with the fall this year, so... So I mean, it'd be a lot of... If we had, you know, down there, it'd be a lot of de-watering, which would be an extra cost, so we're just trying to put that down there. Yeah. It is pretty wet down there.
And so, yeah, you were saying they like kind of peel the turf back and put it like... We're going to have a problem with growing, covering it back up again?
Well, you know, just like poiseur, well, they can peel back the turf. We'll just have to... They'll have to have a contingency board to string it.
That's what I'm hoping for, okay.
Exactly.
Virtual School Days?
Thank you. In terms of... And I don't have anything formal because I'm still working with the union leadership on some of the options. We definitely appreciated the feedback you gave. I think the keep it simple message was very helpful to me. And I think that's what we've been talking on, what our options are to look at universal assignments for the kids and universal cultural proficiency. This morning, we started to wonder if there could be a universal assignment that staff and kids did, at least for the older kids, and we got a little jazzed about that. So we're still in those discussions. There's a lot of good intent still here to get this together so we can pilot a day or two. Hopefully by the December 11th, no later than the 18th, I'll have something really solid to bring you that we've all gotten really close to agreeing on, so...
Great.
It's moving. It's continuing to move. Yeah, great, great progress.
Thanks for that work. Hope there's no more snow between now and then.
I, you know, I think that storm reminded us of why we were having a conversation.
The snow is up in Roma.
The virtual School Days discussion is continuing in reality, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, yes. A little virtually too. Cyber discussion.
Okay, new business.
Various.
So in the package is the monthly variance report for the region. We're within budget right now. You do see the negative continuing in the programs of those districts. We just need to reclassify monies into the circuit breaker revolving account. So this is the 1,000 level function variance report. It's pretty straightforward. Everything that I know is encumbered, salaries, et cetera.
Only question, Jared. So something like at the... Under adjustments, we have the 135 that's moving out of district literature. We've heard about that one before. It moves over. So does that mean for each of the monthly variance reports, it includes all of the adjustments to date for this year?
Correct.
So my only question would be, is there anything... Under adjustments, is there anything new from last time?
So there's nothing new from the last time we saw the variance report. In the way that I'll present, the next set of transfers will be before the variance report, and I'll show you the ins and the outs.
Got it.
So if I don't make any...
And then those get corroborated into this.
Right. So if I don't make any transfers for the rest of the year, these numbers will stay the same, the adjustments.
I have to say, you know, compared to where we might have been the past year on budgets and, you know, we were pulling up, prepping for this, and there's the supplemental request last year, you know what I mean? We're just in a much better place. We... All the realignment work that's even happened this year is just so much more informed that, you know, to look at these numbers and feel really confident that we've got the bandwidth we need to finish. Barring something huge is really a good place to be.
I'm very glad we're not debating a supplemental article tonight.
Are there specific things that you know about that are not encumbered that will come out of this balance?
Yeah, well, utilities, the winter, whatever happens in the winter.
Substitutes.
Substitutes.
Long-term subs is always one.
Yeah.
We're a little further than...
And that's in the two... That's why you see such a big amount in the 2000s that is due to substitutes that still have a large balance in them. So nothing right now, like I said, this good communication, the business office and all the departments, yeah, developed a relationship with a lot of the department shares and everything. So, you know, they're even understanding their budgets this year, so it's going to make matters easier this year.
And a lot of the work we're still doing is, you know, really helping people learn how to live with... Once we make a transfer, like, okay, that's your budget now. If you're going to go over that, we need to talk on where that money's going to come from. And I think all of that approach is really mattering as well. Everyone's more informed, so it's just a really good place to be.
It feels like you're not just telling them to diet, you're teaching them to change their eating habits.
There we go.
They know it's coming back now.
Yeah, just because I'm off dark chocolate. I'm going to make everybody suffer if they're not eating good stuff.
Chocolate.
Yep, thanks.
Where's the chocolate?
All right, let's go.
Well, capital plan is next.
Do you want to?
Yeah. So we developed a draft, five-year capital plan, starting in FY '20 and going through FY '24.
It's so tiny, I'm sorry. Our versions we've been working on have been bigger.
Eric, do you hit command and plus? I think it increases the size.
The notes column, you can view. You can get rid of this.
Yeah, you really need the first column only, really.
Yeah, just zoom it way in.
Because we only need the left side.
You Apple people need touchscreen.
There you go.
No, we can do by you, my dear.
I have a little zoom in.
You can zoom in.
How you do this?
That's working for us.
I like my PC.
So as you know, this is a draft, and right now, we've identified everything in the feasibility study. And since we do not know the amount to fund it, they're all blank. So for FY '20's appropriation, right now, it is at zero until we get the numbers from Gail. We do have some known costs two years out in FY '22 and another known cost in FY '23 that we're trying to get ahead of. So once, again, once we get the costs from Gail and get input from everyone, then they will be plugged into this five-year capital.
Just a little more background, especially because the high school, you know, we've been trying to foreshadow that we want to get ahead of any needs. And I think we did a really thorough review of where the building was at. Getting those four projects off the list has freed us up to say, oh, we're in actually pretty good shape. Those were dangling over us for so long that it allowed us to step back and, you know, Brian's come back to us. We worked really hard on this last weekend, said, you know, that building's in great shape. It's now low-level maintenance, which is an operational cost versus capital needs. So the goal is to maintain it that way and to continue to have it be that way. So it just felt really good to feel like we've gone ahead of identifying what those issues are. They were cleanup issues. There's not outstanding things. If something breaks, you know, we have to be sure we can manage that, but it's not big overhead items that need to be in this plan. The few that are here, updated controlably, they are to use. The auditorium pit filler will always be a discussion point as to whether you need that or can we continue to do it manually. I don't know if you want to talk on that. Go ahead and can you describe that?
Well, the pit filler they have now, it's set up manually. Takes about four custodians, about four hours to set this up at a minimum. And what we have to do is they have to raise or lower the platform for different functions. So they have to get out there and physically lower. The pit filler was VE'd, not the electric pit filler or hydraulic.
Was it value engineered?
Value engineered out of the original project, yes. Due to the cost at the time. So, you know, what this does, it just makes it so much easier for everybody involved where if there's a last minute of setup needed, you press a button, you raise and lower the stage as needed instead of having to have people come in and just set up manually every single time.
We did... We had a small injury too, so it just...
I was going to ask on our radio.
Yeah. Auditorium, the orchestra pit.
The pit in the high school. Because this is... This is the region at the top, but there are a lot of things that aren't...
This is all the high schools.
No, this is all the high schools.
Yep.
Are you seeing Thoreau? Wall of the Thoreau is Wall of the Streets of Thoreau.
Streets, okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, those are the streets, not the building.
So I look at a new... Like, you put up a new house and then 10 years later, you look, you paint the whole thing and you do a new roof or whatever, 20... There's none of that kind of thing. I mean, is that... Pretty much all would be covered out of operating versus...
Well, the building is so new at this point that, you know, a roof is good for 20 years. Certain things are good structurally for anywhere from 10 to 50 years, depending on what the devices are. So as the building ages, we'll be building on the capital plan.
Well, that's... I mean, because you're 10 years out here, right?
Five.
The life of the building.
We're five years out here.
Or 10 from the... We've been in 15. Right. So if you're planning out to 24, that's...
And I don't pretend to know what those things are, like for a house, what that would...
So we're going to have larger things, like the roof and things like that are going to be out probably in a 20-year mark or so. And as the building ages and we see what's happening with the facility, then we can build our capital plan accordingly to fit the needs of what's needed at that particular point in time or changes in the...
Yeah, I mean, if the other schools are in indication, it's the 15-year mark where things are starting to kick in, which is the discussion the Concord group will have later on. So I think we're still in that nice suite.
Well, and if we still land five years out.
Does that mean... We've talked about the fact that, you know, at some point, we may need to have a capital article every year for the high school, just to take care of this building because we want to take good care of it.
Right.
The fact that five years out, and granted, obviously, this will change once we put prices next to the top, or 15 things here, but the... Most of those are things we would like to add versus things that we have to do to maintain the building. Does this mean that at least for the next five years, for the most part, the building maintenance stuff seems like it would fit into the operating budget? There isn't other big building maintenance for it?
Yep. That is what our conclusion is.
That's great news.
For this moment in time.
Yeah, that's...
Sorry, that's right. I mean, it's a relatively new facility, so...
Let's enjoy it while we have it.
Yes.
So I'd like to, once we get our report back from Gail and fill in some of these numbers, start to take some things off. I mean, we need to make some decisions about the high school and all that and just get them off the radar.
Either this is on the radar or not.
Because this would be a scary list if we did. I just don't want it to be out there. Take the life of its own.
It's a good point.
Right. No, it's true. This is a public document linked to the agenda. We don't want people thinking we're planning to do all of this in the next five years.
Some of these are donation-based. So they shouldn't be on this.
We tried. Our goal is to stay consistent with the feasibility study.
Exactly. It should be on for now.
Needs to get vetted. Yeah, we have a...
We should watermark a draft.
Does a estimated cause for smoke detectors ask for it at the bottom? What's that?
So you'll remember, we had a fire.
We do.
So we have not lost track of the fire department's recommendation to put detectors throughout the schools. So we've been just... We didn't track it here because it's expensive and we just thought we needed to share the information with you so they can get discussed. So I don't know what... You want to share the numbers as we have it?
So the number was comprised... I had contacted our engineer, one of our engineers that we utilize, and they gave us a price per classroom pretty much, and then, you know, design costs based on the size of facility so that we could base... Have a basis of cost here. So really, this $120,000 would encompass all of the classrooms that, you know, would need to be taken care of. It would be... This would also take care of design costs and any programming issues and things like that that would arise. And there was also contingency in here just in case something was missed and also for any additional panel boards, maybe booster panels for the system.
So that's up for discussion. I mean, it's up for discussion, yeah.
Why not a warrant article? It's a safety issue. The fire department's recommending it.
Absolutely.
I feel like when we have the prices for everything and we're talking about this year's warrant article, that should be part of the discussion. that should be part of the discussion.
Sure.
Exactly.
And this is because code doesn't require...
Right, right, you're right. I'm glad you pointed it out.
Code does not require the detectors because we have sprinklers. What we learned that is the sprinkler can take a certain heat threshold to trigger while the water's pouring throughout the school. And, you know, 25 minutes later, we've got three floors worth of damage to juggle.
Yeah, because it certainly covers the cost of the damage, but it's the time.
All of it, right. Where detector, it's, they're pretty sure the smoke detector would have gone off within a couple of minutes versus 20, and they would have gotten there before the room got hot enough for the sprinkler to ever go off.
It will lose it.
Yeah, and that's hard.
So can I get the insurance company to pay for it?
For the detectors?
Yeah.
No. We're getting a lot of, they're being really cooperative with us, so we won't push it. Those rooms just status, we haven't had a lot of updates. We're waiting on cabinets to come in. So 404 is still offline, 408 is still, yeah, I know.
And that's a laugh, right?
That's the expense rate.
Because we're waiting on custom cabinetry for both 404 and 408. So once the cabinets are ready, which is...
They're thinking December, December break.
December, we're hoping.
They started with the ceilings, I'm sorry, they started with the ceilings and lighting and things like that, they're starting to get ahead of it. But they're waiting out for the cabinets and the epoxy tops, that's what takes a while.
So at some point, we're probably going to have to move the teacher from 408, and we're going to talk with her on timing and how disruptive this is. 408, after 404 is finished, put her in there so we can finish 408. The room is still offline.
That's a reason to discuss the 120 at least, when we're discussing...
This is what we call a hot issue. She has a burning desire to check. Okay, let's move on.
To you, just keep going.
Yes, yeah, it's true, it's true. We do know it works.
Warrant articles, we're still up to business.
I know, you're going to, I mean, okay, I see. You want to take a look, so the warrant article document here is, should have like draft and purple across it, just to not miss it. The two we're talking about now for the regional committee are no surprises whatsoever. We're just starting to get primed to make sure we've got it all thought through. And again, to Mary's point, are there two, are there three? We have to have those discussions, they're straightforward. The operating budget will be reflective of what you vote in December, so the placeholder numbers are the recommendation, just is how we always frame the article to start with. And then the capital articles will be the other piece. We're actively getting started to work with the town and town council and bond council to make sure all the language in these articles is perfect before, before you even approve it. So we're already working on that. But I think the regional ones are fairly straightforward, barring how much, given how much conversation we just had.
So how do you, how do you, how do you get, we're going to, we're meeting on the 11th with Gail, and then the 18th will vote on the articles, but the 11th we... So the 18th is the first time we'll see the official language?
No, we're expecting to have the language for you on the 11th.
And plug in, you know?
Yeah, plug in the project.
Okay.
As we talk about these, I know the Concord Finance Committee doesn't meet till Thursday to do their guideline again. As we look at the operating budget though, just to follow up on our discussion earlier of the various scenarios, is that something we're discussing more tonight or no? Are we just going to wait until we get kind of official feedback from, more official feedback from Concord Finance Committee?
That's what I expected. I think what you did, the conversation you had, I think, was another layer of progress, to keep vetting, and Jared brought you new information, and then you'll be able to respond to the guideline more informed once we have that.
Okay.
Well done on this.
Can you just make the subject be Concord Town Meeting Warrant Articles? Because I went looking for Carlisle, and obviously we don't have those.
Correct.
Because these are, right, this is the starting point.
So these are just Concord right now?
Yeah.
All of it. All of it, Concord Town Meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? And I note that we're almost 25 minutes early.
Don't brag. No, it means we have 25 minutes for the next.
Just the region's adjourned.
Just the region, oh, that's, that's why I'm speaking, right. So motion to adjourn the regional school committee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, lucky you guys.
Sorry, no, no.
All right, let's go right.
By a week before we...
Sorry, I know you're racing, but...
There are three, exactly three, 9:10 will reconvene. I have a kid I like to see.
I haven't seen mine since Sunday.
I hate that.
Well, it happens.
She didn't feel good this morning, so she was sound asleep. I'd even see her sleeping. You know, one of those mornings, you're like, honey, you get a nap? She's like, yeah. I'm like, okay, go, roll back over then. Oops, sir.
This is the goal for maintenance.
Oh, okay.
And where do we sign?
You are there.
I'm here. I have two minutes.
So the CPS variance report, same thing. Everything is encumbered that I know about. We're doing, it looks quite a lot, quite better right now in the programs of other districts. That's the only negative right now, and we're going to be transferring that out to circuit breaker. And we're within budget.
Sounds great, thank you. Does it make questions?
That's great.
All right, now to our capital plan? Yes. So, I'll do a little preview while you're pulling it up. This is probably the most comprehensive capital plan that we've had in a number of years. Really detailed work done with Jared, Brian, and Ian in terms of trying to really put out all of the upcoming needs we could project for the schools. And obviously, they vary depending on the school, the elementary's being in far better shape, the middle schools being in a mindset of how do we make this the best environment possible while we try to prohibit any major catastrophe in the next five years. And I think we've come to some, as much level of comfort as possible to say the major infrastructure's holding. We also, it's not so vulnerable right now that we would recommend hundreds of thousands of dollars of replacement projects. So that can be part of the discussion we're going to have. You'll see too, that some of what we identified hit a threshold of the nine, so you'll remember the town manager's capital budget always allot a certain amount to the schools. And so that number we've heard from Carrie LaFleur is 900,000, which it was last year, 800,000 the year before. So there's a little bump and then a nice steady predictability to that, I think. So what we ended up coming up with was, let's build a capital plan that can stay within that expectation, knowing there's a fairly reliable funding source there. And then other things we'll build for additional consideration. And what the category we ended up grouping together outside of the predictable 900-ish every year for the next five years was some of the ERU work that we've mentioned to you in the past and really Alcott-Thoreau being the needs there, Willard's in a better place because of when the school was built and the way they built it. And also the boilers here at Ripley. It was really fun to hear that the one is original to 1957. And the next one was a hand, Brian will laugh at me if I get it wrong. The next one was a hand-me-down from another school in the 1970s or something. So that's what we're functioning off of here, and that's obviously not energy efficient. And so we're having little bits of issue whether, not because it's hot in my office, but because it's not working occasionally. So Ripley needs that attention as well. So we ended up proposing to you, and this can be part of our dialogue tonight after Jared goes through the other items, what we ended up calling a green initiatives group because the costs got big quickly because you have five ERUs in both Thoreau and Alcott, plus the big boiler replacement here. So we are suggesting that we would spend the next year researching reimbursements and grants, and there's potential subsidies out there because they're cost-energy efficient. And we want to be sure we've explored all of those in the meantime before we ask for any town meeting funding. So we'll talk you through each of the buildings, and then the green piece, a little more detailed, stop us along the way. We can go by building or we can go by year, whichever we present. I think building probably makes more sense, and we'll highlight what we've proposed for FY twenty. And again, everything we've proposed in the capital plan here for FY twenty is within the 900,000 that the town managers out.
So I have a question on the 900,000, it was 800,000 a year or two ago, whatever. Do the school, does the school administration have any kind of input to arrive at a particular number?
We have not had input. I think if we were to go over the 900,000, that was the discussion we were having. If we were to say to them, the question, I think, if we go over is, can they, would they consider increasing it or are we talking a different warrant article? We started to answer our own questions just because we saw how the groupings were falling and are thinking, a year from now, you might be considering a different warrant, a separate warrant article for the ERUs and the boilers or a portion of that. But you, you're right, it's part of the discussion is the strategy in terms of funding if we need more than what's being out.
I like the idea of you going through by building and sort of focus on 20 and then...
Great.
Can we go by school?
Just go by school?
So Alcott's up first.
The Alcott, so FY twenty, we didn't identify any needs because we had had some security for the Alcott this fiscal year, about 15,000 worth of security cameras. So FY twenty-one, nothing right now is identified. And then for FY twenty-two, the VCT and carpet replacement.
What's VCT?
Floor tiles, the vinyl composition floor tiles.
And then in FY twenty-four is the sidewalk repairs. So you see that we have, we jumped over a few, such as the ERU replacement, as Laurie was saying, and the boiler. Those are green initiatives that we're going to go over after this. So I plan on reaching out to Kate Hanley to work with her on glance and everything very, very soon, and we'll go over those. In the way, again, that this report is done, we did the five years, we added a little bit of comment, and then where we thought level of importance, I had Brian do that scale as the expert. So a level of importance is just, you know, one through three, and for that fiscal year, one being the most needed, three being the least.
The, is that LEA, new lead or new lead?
Lead, a lead boiler.
So like lead certified?
Primary boiler.
A certified, ah, got it.
Primary.
Yes. And that was, I'm sorry, Lauren, I interrupted. It says new lead condensing boiler and controls. That was from a 2013 report the town had done. They had done an energy audit throughout all the buildings, and they had recommended a new condensing boiler with controls. We had modified that to, instead of putting just a single condensing boiler, and by the time we piped it all in, would have been just as cost-effective to replace the existing boilers with new boilers, you know, and tie the piping into them. So we had put that in there. But when it says new lead condensing boiler, really we knew, new boilers, new condensing boilers.
And the ER, I think we've talked about this before, but the ERU replacements?
Yes.
Are those going to be a consistent replacement? Or is there something new in their design that they don't have to be replaced? Because they're not cheap.
No, they're not cheap. The ones that there were first-generation ERUs, they're really inefficient compared to what they made now. We're looking at package rooftop units that actually have, you know, a built-in energy recovery wheel. What they, I'm not sure if you're aware of what they had to do with that school. They had put ERUs in, but they were heating only. They added a cooling section in. With that cooling section, there's no return air, they don't even use the wheel with it. So we're losing all of that mechanical energy and cooling energy in that facility. They're at a 15-year lifespan, so they're getting that type, that generation where they were designed, they're getting near the end of their lifespan. And also, we can increase the efficiency of the equipment by about 50% as we replace them. So because when we replace them, it's going to be a combination DX cooling, packaging it with return air in it, in ERU will work both heating and cooling, so we see all that extra energy recovery.
So what's the annual utility cost?
Yep. Were you looking at it last night, 150?
Just for Alcott.
Two-year paper. So they're about 150.
That's pretty close, too.
How much are the ERUs?
The ERUs are anywhere within a range of around 250,000 dollars apiece.
So it's a three and a half year. Not bad.
Well, it's going to be much more efficient. This one, when we put these in, then there was a, it's so hot, they kind of retrofitted them to...
Right, they didn't have mechanical cooling, so they brought in some mechanical cooling. Instead of just replacing the units, I know that they were trying to look at it as a cost savings, but in the long run, it really was...
Yeah, so I think when we do replace them, I think that number's going to go down.
Well, yeah, because then the cooling capacity can be reduced also. Because they're looking at 100% outdoor all the time. Whereas we would, the demand wouldn't be 100% all the time, so...
So, you know, last winter in that really freezing cold, it just couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
And we were, you know, getting called over there because they were cold and it was working full capacity for what it was, but two degrees outside for extended periods.
Yeah.
And again, without return air, they get 100% out there all the time without the return air, you know, get that extra energy that you would get back into the building too, so...
Right.
So Thoreau, so Thoreau, a green initiative again for the ELU. Heat trace for the slope roofs to prevent ice damming, this is a safety issue. 55,000 from FY twenty-one, we identified. The lead boiler, that's also in the green initiatives. And then security updates for FY twenty, about 15,000 worth of cameras.
So in essence, those, and then Willard's is the same, you did Alcott?
Yep.
Yes.
Is pushing out the heat trace for purposes of spreading out cost burden or because we don't need it for another year?
It's cost burden mostly.
Mostly.
I mean, that seems a lot of money for cameras. Is that, the cameras, is there software involved?
Well, it's installation of the cameras, because there's no wiring for the cameras currently.
Okay, so wiring?
Right, so wiring, installation, and stuff.
Yeah, the cameras are, okay.
I think wiring's the most expensive.
Right.
It's the labor.
Okay.
All right, Willard?
So Willard, we identified some carpet replacement, FY twenty-one to FY twenty-three. RTU exterior installation replacement FY twenty-one for 45,000. Walkway repairs in FY twenty-four. Boiler exhauster height increase, 18,000 FY twenty-one. Some exterior lighting replacements in FY twenty-three, and the security updates from next year.
So we're hoping to do all the security updates at one time, just to get everything updated.
Yeah.
Plus, that's becoming a higher priority now with the group looking at it.
Yeah, we need to, we need more visibility at the schools that don't have the cameras that they need. And are the economy of scale, like if you have more, I mean, you get better?
Hopefully.
The exhauster caught my eye as a health and safety issue.
So at that, at that school, it's low to the roof. I mean, it's supposed to be a minimum of three feet with any breaching, even with a power exhauster. It's a little low in that area. What happens is we notice it not all the time, but certain filling wings, where we retrain some of the exhausts around where the boiler room door is. It doesn't happen all the time, but it really is something we'd like to address and get it up and away from the roof further. And then at the same time, we'll replace the exhauster because it'll be 10 years over the death of it.
So my question is, sounds like something we ought to do sooner, do as soon as we can.
It would be nice, yes. But we had to, we were trying to break down, again, the 900,000 dollars for each facility into an appropriate level, an appropriate location for what we need for this year and for the next fiscal years. It's not an imminent health and safety issue, but it is something we'd like to address.
So is there any way to peel some of that money off the 100,000 dollars at the middle school for, it's reserved for life safety now?
Why don't we have a full middle school discussion? I think we're anxious to pull anything out of those two 50,000 dollar pockets because it's so unpredictable. You could talk with us on some of the other proposed pieces though, if you wanted to address that exhaust issue at Willard. Through our conversations, we didn't think it hit the threshold to rush to it. It's been that way a long time, and it's being well managed right now. We did come in with a strategy of, let's really front-load the middle school, knowing that if you don't do it this year, it gets harder and harder to justify if we really are on a path to a new school, some of what we've talked about in the past. So we really did try to front-load everything we could to the middle school. Do you want to do the district-wide and the Ripley first? And then we'll go to the middle school altogether?
So we got three quotes for district-wide for the new telephone system that we desperately need. So we budgeted about 200,000, we think that's enough for next fiscal year. The Ripley, nothing was identified for FY twenty. But in the green initiative, you're going to see the boiler replacement, as we talked about, ADA updates in FY twenty-one. Installation of the split AC units at the coffee center in FY twenty-one as well. Exterior door replacement, two years in a row in 22, 23, 24. Paving the parking lot is needed. I think we've been just doing piecemeal right now. Full update is needed in FY twenty-four.
Did you consider adding any parking spaces?
We did in the past, but it'd be about 200,000 dollars to add more parking in this area because of all the regulatory requirements and things of that nature. We can add that in there if you would like to see that in there.
No, no, I'm just, I'm asking. Because I mean, occasionally, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of cars.
Yes, yes.
They're kind of off to the side here and there.
At the time, it was cost prohibitive. They felt it was, the past administration at the time, just because it was a little over 20,000 dollars.
Are you, that parking lot where we... Are you, that parking lot where we entered this building, isn't that, is that in some sort of wetland or buffer zone or something?
Good question.
Uh, we're just outside of the, there's...
That encroach on, that's what I'm saying, be an additional, like?
No, actually, because we just, we repaved what's here and we were thinking of adding in the strip where it's grassed in there.
Yeah.
And then making that where the parking is so that it'd be a continuous flow where it's through. But we weren't going to go towards the wetlands.
Yeah, got it.
So that a little bit of additional would be another 200,000 dollars?
Well, because of all, once we do that, now we have to do all the new infrastructure, all the new drainage. They'll make us put islands in, lighting in.
There's all kinds of requires.
See, the existing building was under the old codes and...
These are just the statistics that we have.
Brian, do you know how old the building is?
This is 57, the original, and then 67 was the addition. So this, this end is 67, up front is 57.
We budgeted a sign for in front of the, one of the parking spaces right out here that says for the superintendent so that Lori doesn't have to walk around the entire building.
I love a good day when I pull in a camp park and I'm late. Usually what some of you are waiting for, it's raining.
I think we need to empower Lori to pull right here and mark a parking spot. I'll just go nail one up.
Kristen was showing me the gift of the handicap spot. Oh, boy, and then I thought, well, that...
We don't want you bringing it in.
I don't need to get to that, how that played out. But it was spoiling me there. Like, you're right here. And she always had a spot. She's like, oh, yeah, no, I can park.
That's fair.
Brian, can you give us more on ADA at Ripley? Can I explain that?
Uh, that was like, we don't have any leather locks and things of that nature in the building. We have a lot of knobs and things.
It's access hardware.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that would include rekeyings or whatever, master key system for the building.
I think at some point, the bathrooms here need to get discussed. We didn't put it here yet, but they need, they need, they need some work.
Brian, you're on page two of the Ripley. So I don't want you to think you were done.
No, yep. So the...
Before we go to middle school?
The, the integrated piping, the original piping in this building, we identified a $450,000 project in FY '21 for the domestic water piping replacement.
That can't be green? An issue?
It could be, and that's up for discussion.
Right.
That's interesting, yeah, because that's...
We'll have to see if there's a grant. Of course, sometimes we'll...
Do you, you know, grants sort of for boilers and stuff, other stuff?
There are for boilers and energy efficiency measures, yes. We're at Green Community, so we, we can tap into Green Community grants. National Grid will also give us incentives towards boilers and equipment and things of that nature.
Okay, great.
Taking a little issue with antiquated 1950s and early 60s.
No disrespect, man.
Replacing the heating and water piping in FY '23 for 500,000. The big cost is doing these specific things.
So that's the issue, you know, everything in the facility has special fittings. A lot of it's in tunnels or where we'd have to go in with, you know, crews take it out. It's expensive endeavor, so.
Preschool glazing in FY '22.
Glazing is?
This...
Windows. The windows, just the windows.
Yeah, but there'll be significant savings, we think, by doing this, heating.
So is that a Green initiative?
There was, I talked about some sort of...
Yeah, you know, it's kind of, we would have to look into that, just to see, to see what's available for that. There are limited grants for windows and things of that nature, but we can look.
The other thing, MSBA has a smaller program that you can apply for some of these kinds of projects. So we could look at that. I don't think we're going to go there right now. It's still a middle school assault, but there, there is some money through the MSBA for some of these kind of projects. So we could consider that too.
Well, I mean, this is helpful to, it's somewhat discouraging, but also helpful to see. But if you look at it, skip over this year, FY '21, '22, and '23. I mean, almost half or more, or almost half of our 900 is taken up by just big Ripley improvements.
Yes, Ripley's infrastructure is not...
Doesn't leave much at the schools themselves. And even with the next one, you know, if you look at the next one that you're not even due yet, you're a third to half of all of our improvement budgets. It's all of a sudden in big projects here.
And yet the nature of the projects don't let themselves just getting spread out.
No.
No, no. But anyway, just good to know they're coming. Okay, sorry, keep going. Just reacting.
Flooring in FY '24 at the Ripley. And then we had the exterior repairs, painting, repointing. Identified some needs in FY '21 as well as FY '23. It's just cosmetic. And then chimney repointing in FY '21 for 25,000. And then the last one, install connection to the sewer system in FY '24. And this priority could change as we put in the notes there. Can you explain that?
Yes, so, I mean, we were hoping to connect to the town sewer eventually. When John was here, we had a discussion with the town where, you know, initially the school department had thought they bought into the program for the, for the water treatment plant. So they, they thought that there was a check cut to the town to make sure that we were on there for capacity. But the town said that we weren't on there for capacity. So that's something we'll have to visit in the future with the town. Because if we want to do any upgrades to this facility, eventually we have to tie into the sewer system. Because it is a 1957 septic system. It's working now, but I mean, if we ever want to do anything with it, we really need to pump it into the, into the water treatment plant.
And the town sewer system is up to capacity, isn't it, or closed?
That's what they were saying. So in, in the administration passed out, there was a placeholder for the school district, you know, they were set aside.
Right.
For the administration building, because when they put the water treatment plant, you know, we were so close to it.
Absolutely.
The essential is that there was going to be a placeholder, and they thought it was actually money's issue. It just couldn't...
Want to go to the middle school?
All right. Took a different approach with the middle schools.
We indeed, we did, yes. So we identified some costs, starting with the puberty. Life and safety for the next five years, just a $50,000 contingency for the aging facilities. Carpet installation throughout the facility for 133,000 dollars in FY '20. And then just painting, give it a little facelift, 40,000 next year. I think that would go along with...
And that's all internal painting, just the clear...
Yes, yes.
I know there's, there's a lot of concern with the exterior where it's peeling and flaking, but that's just all cosmetic up there, so.
I agree, I was just kind of clarifying.
Sandborne, so the same 50,000 for the next five years for life and safety. Identified 18,000 for railing installation at the Senate Courtyard in FY '21 due to safety issues.
Is that what's next to the cafeteria in there?
Yes. So they don't let the children out there now, but you know, there's a, there's a really high drop off on edge. It was built to code when it was built, but if, you know, which is a potentially scary situation out there if anybody was out there. The rail, the current concrete retaining wall's low compared to what they normally are. And it would just make out railing and safety purposes.
Right.
We have relatively small expenses and some safety implications. And hopefully a short shelf life on that school. The sooner we do it, the more we get some value for the investment.
So we, and we pushed that off just because we were prioritizing so many of the reconfiguration needs at Sandborne. Do you mind if I just zip through a couple of these? The science lab is all reconfiguration to make sure we have enough eighth grade space. We've been working on that since last summer. First putting tile in and now needing the actual tables and equipment. The classroom reconfiguration, so Justin's walked Brian and I through a couple of times. And with some of the in-house sped programming and needs of kids, we've got some bigger spaces that are better served to get split into smaller spaces. And they're large enough to do that. So we're working on a couple of rooms to try to get better usage out of them. And they're, they're, they're well suited for smaller, small groups bed spaces. And right now we have small groups and big spaces. And it just isn't as logical as it could be. So we're hoping to do some installation of a couple of walls to partition them. We walked also with the art teachers, really wanting to be sure they could run their full program at Sandborne. And after, now that Justin's got a schedule mapped out and essentially draft room assignments, we know everybody fits and where they're going. And so we were able to consider looking at the art room down toward the mods and push that out further into the current classroom next door, make that a smaller sped setting. Push that room out and make it a bigger room, which is good. It is really tight in there. And then the hope was another kiln, which they use constantly in their current program. So that's all built into this is to get a second, really well functioning art room with a kiln and allow that program to really flourish in that space.
And is the kiln used more in the upper grades than in sixth grade?
From what I hear, it's used all the time.
Yeah, it's used all the time.
Justin's like, you can't, you can't say no. It's going to dramatically, you know, because the discussion we've had is that the reconfiguration will not reduce the ability to do the programming we're running. And the kiln became, became part of that.
Became a reduction, okay, that's good to know.
Which is the rear shop and the music room?
It's down on the...
It's down outside, yeah.
Passing music rooms on the way out to the mods.
Almost, it's literally the room before you walk outside to go to the mods.
Yeah, but it is small.
Yep. Again, the carpeting theme, I think, really just, some of it's so old and awful. And then painting throughout. And the hope is that all of that together and the new reconfiguration, we sort of just give ourselves a little fresh life in each school and make them feel valued and solid learning environments. And just make it feel like a good place to go to school every day. Aside, not that it isn't, but it just, it, it, those of us who've moved kids into new buildings know what a difference it does make. And you can feel it.
Well, carpet and painting.
Carpet and painting can make a lot, you know, we even talked about, there's so much dark paneling, especially like puberty's loaded. Throw a coat of white paint on it, it'll perk it all up.
I find it's hard, in spite of their best efforts to make Sandborne look clean, because it doesn't look bright. So it does affect people's perception of their...
And then the real realization, you've heard the one staff member we've asked for on all of CPS is another custodian. We've been understaffed in these two buildings for a long time. So the combination of the facelift and then the right staffing and hopefully it all just feels much better. There were small requests that we didn't put here that we're also addressing through some other options that we had. You know, little things like a new washer for the, you know, family consumer science room or the, you know, little stuff like that, we've been able to do out of other operating things, but...
So I had a question about the economics of carpet versus tile.
It's loaded with asbestos all through those buildings.
No, I'm saying when you re-carpet someplace, couldn't we put tile in? Would that be more cost effective?
You'd have to evade the asbestos first, am I right?
Not necessarily. It's just that the carpets, the carpets are, well, because we have students with hearing impairments. So I know that we've been putting carpet in elementary schools because of students that are moving through the district that, that have cochlear implants and things like that. So we've been adding carpet into the classrooms.
To make it sound...
Exactly. It's for reverberation in the classrooms and things of that nature. So, you know, we wanted to make sure that we kept that process going because the students are worried. Alcazot, Thoreau will be moving into the middle school. And then there's, you know, a couple of factors that it's more cost effective in the long run too. Seeing as we're going to be given it in five years. But again, the bigger driving factor is the students that are moving from the elementary schools that do have cochlear implants and things of that nature where, where it's easier for us to transition into the carpet and leave it there.
So you can just, can you put the carpet down over the VIT?
Yes, in some areas we can, yes. We will.
It's remediate.
So we want to remediate certain areas. Some areas we're going to have to just because of the condition of it, but some areas we can get away with it.
To your point, Bob, when we build a new school, that's going to be a discussion. If you're carpeting a building, that's not usually what happens anymore for all the negatives that go with carpet.
Right. Okay.
Okay? Questions, thoughts?
Well, it's a very good, big picture, comprehensive sense of what's in front of us all.
Yeah, thank you for going to this.
Really, no, I can't thank Brian, Ian, and Jared enough. We turned to this the minute the budget was finished and literally did it in a couple of weeks.
I can't believe it's done in so much detail for today already. It's really helpful. I mean, my, just looking at, if we're talking FY '20 for a minute and move us short term. My take, and maybe it will be obvious because I'm the middle, singing for the middle school all the time. But I do feel like it's important that we focus the resources on the middle school this year. I feel like the things that you've highlighted to be done this year are pretty critical in terms of maybe not safety, but creating an environment for these kids who are going to be there for the next four or five years.
Well, who says we're going to reconfigure and you're going to be there for sure?
Yeah, and we're going to make this as good an experience as we can in these buildings. I think that's important.
Becoming very important, pretty clear.
For students and for staff. I mean, we need everybody to enjoy it. We need staff to feel inspired also to teach the children and to feel good about being...
You know, we can get into this maybe when we get to the warrant articles. But there's been a value statement kind of made here along the way that I think we're trying to reverse with the middle school environment and climate. That just because the buildings are on borrowed time here and there's a new building coming eventually. We all still really care and think there's investments we need to make in the meantime.
Yeah. I think it's important. Do you want to go to the CMS facility needs while we're talking CMS?
Yes, I think that makes sense.
I see the Green Initiative just sort of articulated the costs and we know what we're going to try and do there.
Yeah, I think we've described it at this point. So you just see how it plays out and some of the numbers are. It's $4 million worth of stuff at the moment. So we're going to work on that and keep it close.
Yeah. So facility needs, I can, there's no presentation or anything here. I can kind of facilitate the discussion. I don't know, sorry, before you start, is, do we want to just, we're, we're going to do warrant articles, which are sort of part of like facility needs. Do we want to just combine them and maybe start with warrant articles of the, just get them to the operating budget? Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can do that, it makes sense.
So that makes sense.
Our conversation on the next ones, or the ones that aren't part of that maybe.
Right. So when we started to pull together the CPS warrant articles, there's, there's some options and decisions to be made here. So we'll start with the easy ones. The operating budget right now, the placeholder is the recommended budget. Obviously, December 11th, we'll talk on what that number will be and see if we can vote that. So that's pretty obvious. The second one we're suggesting is the middle school feasibility request for the feasibility study. Reminder that MSBA is due to call any minute and try to give us a status update. So I think part of tonight's discussion as we talk CMS facility needs, if we're invited into MSBA, we have to put this forward and it's a subsidized feasibility study in the first step in the new school. If we're not invited in, I think becomes part of the discussion that we're probably going to loop to in a minute. So why don't I finish this and then we'll look back to that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, perfect.
The capital budget is the straightforward monies that are set aside in the town manager's budget of 900,000, which we've tried to, we've come in with a proposal on how to get to that 900,000. And then the last one, we've done homework on some of our revolving account needs. We, the one I'll mention, because I mentioned it recently, is the preschool one. We've been doing homework on that so that those funds are available to us to subsidize the preschool teachers. And it looks like we don't need a warrant article.
We do not.
We do not.
Oh.
So that's good news.
That's good.
All at the discretion of the town manager.
Desi had an update, I believe it was this fiscal year, that said, had some new language and it was pretty straightforward that preschool revolving account, if we're getting, if we're paying the expense of utilities and all that and teachers and everything, that we could set up a revolving account and offset those expenses.
So we'll continue that discussion with Chris and Carrie. And so the one that's here now is similar in nature that we have facility rental fees for the CPS schools that come in that right now go to the general town fund. This one, we do need a town. It's late, you were trying to be subtle. He's getting out of his dessert.
Please, enjoy it.
No one's subtle.
Just make sure you don't have a light player.
We do need an article for this one, correct, for the facility's revolving account.
So we're still looking into this, as of right now, we do, there's, there's something in the law that says that if the town adopts... that says that if the town adopted a certain amount of language, a certain language, that we do not have to get town meeting approval. We have looked into it today with the D O R representative of the town, so I'm working with Carrie. Should have an answer in the next day or two.
So often this is just a matter of convenience for a town treasurer, makes money less circuitous.
So we have access to the funds, we have not had direct access to them.
So right now this goes into their, basically their free cash.
But we are not requesting any money and if we are just creating an account that can be used to hold.
The fees that are for the schools.
In the future.
In the future, yeah.
And we have several revolving accounts at CPS and more at the region already, so this is not the mechanics that are new to us.
Where are these rental fees from?
Use of the CPS schools.
Usually like the R T O or the gymnasium.
Right.
That's how groups manage.
So we take the money for the custodial costs, but the other goes into this account. So it's confusing, there's a lot of accounting.
A lot of accounting, for no, for no gain for anybody involved.
Correct.
We still owe you a review of the fees, we haven't forgotten, so this can be part of that discussion too, the process of the bookkeeping.
I think we've had some other important.
Yeah, we've, you've talked.
That's okay to put that one off temporarily.
So I think we're looping back to the middle school conversation, yeah.
CMS facility needs, I can summarize by saying, we need a new facility. That much we know. I mean, I figured I would just kind of do the quick review of what we've said before, which is we know that no matter what, even if we are invited into MSBA tonight after this meeting, we are still four to five years out, depending on the building process. Obviously, we need to maintain it during that. Right now, what we need to look at is, like Lori said, what our next steps are based on whether we're invited in or not. We're assuming at this point they've probably made their decision. And I just wanna make sure we're really starting to think about what comes next. Like Lori said, if they invite us in this week, our next steps are very clear, not even optional really. We submit our warrant article, we ask for the funding for the feasibility study, and hopefully a year from now, we'll be talking about a warrant article for a new building. That's ideal case scenario.
What's a ballpark figure for the feasibility study?
Feasibility studies, somewhere in the.
So it's about, well, about anywhere from one point one, one point two, but then you have to look into the O P M. You have to fund that as well. So you're looking at between one point four and one point five.
Order project.
Manager.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's a significant amount. Now, if we are invited into the MSBA process, that is a reimbursable cost.
That's good.
Right, which is great. So one of the things that we had, I'm gonna step back a little bit just to review for everybody. One of the things we had talked about at one point was, well, what if we, you know, thought about, actually, let me just clarify, if we get in, that's very clear, so let's move off of that now. If we are not invited into the MSBA process this year, we gotta start thinking about where we're going. One of the things we had all briefly tossed around was, well, do we move forward with the feasibility study anyway so that if we get invited in next year, we're a step ahead of the game? Unfortunately, that doesn't work because if you are working with the MSBA, they will only accept a feasibility study that is done under their watch. So if we did one on our own and then went and applied to them, we'd have to redo a feasibility study. So moving forward with the feasibility study and thinking that we are then going to kind of jump into the MSBA process is not an option. So, which leaves the two options, either we just hang up our hats and say, okay, we submit again next year, which I think we need to do either way. But I kind of wanna throw out for discussion something else that I think we at least need to start thinking about. It's gonna be a very big and difficult question and it would be hard to get to, but we need to start thinking about it. At some point, and I don't know when that is, it will not be cost effective to wait for the MSBA because we're gonna have to start to put so much money into these buildings that we would spend all of that amount that we would potentially be reimbursed. Where's that tipping point? We don't know. But like we've said, we're kind of living on borrowed time in many senses here. So far, the buildings are limping along and we're doing okay. We don't know when things are gonna fail and we're gonna have to start pouring money into them. I just think we're gonna have to start at some point thinking about, if we don't get invited in, when do we start the discussion of, do we think about going it alone? It's a big cost to think about, but in addition to the cost that we could put into the buildings, I think we also really have to think about the experience that we're giving our students because we're at a point where our staff is amazing and our program is amazing, but it is being limited by the condition of these buildings. And we need to get to a point as soon as humanly possible. And I think it should be no more than this four or five year window, I would like to keep it to four. I don't think we can let it go any further than that. And if we don't get into this process, I think we need to at least start the conversation about, how do we do it?
So I have a question, let's assume they refuse us, do they give particular reasons that would give us some kind of a timing advantage?
Diana's had the same, no, the same conversation with me three times since last year this time. It's all, they're validating the need, they're validating that what we said is the condition of the schools, is the condition of the schools, they're validating our concerns are definitely real. What they then have to do is compare it against the rest of the pool. So it's all about the comparability of who else applies during that particular year. And, you know, she reassures me every time that the fact that they've confirmed the need is real is huge piece of how things happen. Again, they're limited to the five hundred and fifty to six hundred million dollars they get in a given year and it all depends who else is in there, you know. She brought up the example, if we get a Lowell high school for two hundred and twenty million that we're essentially funding huge percentages of, that five fifty suddenly doesn't go very far.
Exactly.
So that's, that is the same conversation I've had with her now three solid times. And she talks me through every time to say, it's all about who's in the pool. You know, last year this time, she called to say, you're not being invited in. One, it was a phone call, which I didn't wanna read too much into, but it again, it validated the need. And two, it was about, just hit the button again, you have, you've done everything perfectly. You're totally synced up with how this process works, we have the information, we need, apply again?
Just.
And so here we are, waiting to see, we don't know who's in the pool. We know the numbers are about the same, you know, eighteen projects or so to be funded out of forty that are still in the mix. So there's no way to predict, I've talked to superintendents who've been in four times and don't get invited in, and there's no way to know.
So, and I could, before we go any further, I just spoke briefly about our need, but Lori has spoken to it in much more detail and much more eloquently than I can. Can you just talk a little bit about the condition, not the physical condition of the buildings, but why do you need a better environment to host our education?
Yeah, I've actually, last year was a big learning curve for Justin and I in seeing how those buildings are operating. And there's good, there's great instruction going on, that is not the discussion here. It's the environment in which those teachers are trying to do that instruction and then ultimately the environment for the kids. And just in practice of how you wanna be running a middle school, the team approach is how you're trying to structure things, we have no ability to put teachers in a cluster the way you would want to in a team, they're spread out all over the place. So right there, it's a marginalized, we've got band programs running in two schools. The kids are rehearsing as one big band once before the concert. I looked at Dan when he told me that, it hadn't dawned on me yet. I wandered to Sandborne, there's all these kids everywhere, and Dan's like, oh, yep, we just had our, it's four o'clock in the afternoon, we just had our only full sixth grade rehearsal. And my, your mouth just drops open, you're like, what do you mean, you're, it's the only time, they're all in the same place before they play for the public, and it's just like, how, what are we, what are we doing? You know, we're gonna, we're gonna make improvements on the fact that sixth grade and seventh and eighth will all be in the same place now. However, the clear part of what's gonna be more work is the transitions, we've added a transition. We know our challenges, just like every district, is five to six, eight to nine. Now, guess where that's going? Five to six, six to seven, eight to nine. We've added a whole other layer of vertical alignment, which in our heads, all under one school, one principal, but they're not in the same place, I know exactly how that plays out. I had, you know, years ago, I had fourth grade in the building for a long time. The minute they went to the other school, it was like third, world ended at third grade and unless we continued to bring them back, it was a really big challenge to keep them all in the same place. We've had some really interesting feedback, there's so many positives to the reconfiguration, but it's not a perfect fix. Talking with Needham some more in terms of their challenges, because they love their sixth grade buildings. But because we're still all in a middle school mindset, like reminding us that we have to continue to host big events across both schools because can we get the eighth graders to go to an event at Peabody next year when there's only sixth graders over there? Or that will suddenly not be their school, like all of this has to play out. And probably my biggest feedback is, you know, trying to do this under one administration, Justin's been here and spoke, I think, pretty eloquently to all of you. One administrator who literally runs back and forth all day, even with the two assistant principals, keeping them synced up is incredibly challenging because they're in two different spaces. And then just keeping staff morale has been a challenge, I'm spending a lot of time over there, sitting on these committees with them, trying to really stay close. I've been asked to come over and hold forums with them a couple of times by the C T A just so they can continue to share their frustrations, which at this point range from anything, from it's too hot, to the technology doesn't work and I gotta give Peter's team a lot of credit. He stepped back and said, what do we need to do, and they've gotten over there. And even in this year's budget, we're trying to upgrade all their projectors that are ten years old. Ten years old, totally not on the radar. So thankfully, it's cost efficient enough, we can afford to do that. But there's just the never ending list. And there's no question it trickles down to the kids and the climate and the environment. And you drive out of there and you think, it's conquered, what are we doing? We can't do what we should be doing. And having built a new middle school, Justin and I both, like, know what it could be and there's no possibility, you have the principal of the year say to me, I can't do what I would do because of this, the way this place works and the limitations of these schools. I mean, we're just underserving everybody by working in the space we're in. So it's gotta be on the discussion table, I, you know, I guess I can be the one to say politically, I think we should try, if MSBA says no, get the feel of the community for a feasibility study. You did it for Willard after the other two projects were MSBA funded, there's been a history here of it. On the positive side, MSBA says, you know, a lot of this is appetite in the community for, you know, can you get the local funds, they're communities that, you know, especially out west, Berkshires, they get funds, they get subsidies and they can't get the local funding, you know. So she's asked me all those questions. There's never a guarantee, but I, you know, my answer to her was, every meeting we go to is about the cost of the new middle school. So I think there's a readiness to have the discussion at least, and a knowledge that there's a need here in a community that values education. But I don't see how, I don't see how we go back to that building and not say we tried, whichever way we gotta try. I just don't know how to talk to these teachers anymore and these kids. And but my final, this is the only middle school experience for the kids that are in there. The people who are gonna benefit are down in the elementary schools and, you know, we gotta, we're doing the best we can hopefully for them, but to think the kids that are in kindergarten, first grade are still gonna get set up for this and all those years later, it's just very frustrating, I would think, as a community, to not have addressed it by then.
Thank you.
Was that enough?
I mean, you say it because, with knowledge, because you're experiencing it in more detail than we are and it's so helpful to hear that.
So from a process standpoint, and I guess I'm speaking from a position of agreement that we need a new middle school, when and where and how, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we have to discuss.
If we are, if we are.
This is a big discussion to have.
So if we're gonna have a discussion and we're gonna develop a warrant article hoping that we have MSBA funding for a feasibility study, then the conversation changes if we don't get in and we hope we know that by December meeting, our next meeting.
Yeah, and I'm happy to reach out to Diane again. When I last spoke to her, their intent is to publicly have the conversation about the awards, December thirteenth at their board meeting, which is why the timeline to notify districts is over the next week or so. I can reach out to her again, she probably gets her ass by all of us right about now. She assured me I would know before that December thirteenth meeting.
So we would be in a position to start to make those decisions about whether or not we put forward a warrant article for feasibility study if we don't get in, but we would have several months.
Yes.
To decide whether or not to move.
You could put the placeholder in.
But also, we would have several months to hold public forums to start to get a.
Several.
Three.
We'd have three months.
It's either a couple or several, so that's three.
Which is better than three weeks, Wally.
If it's a public forum, but also our coffee, it's the things we normally do to get out and get feedback as much as possible.
I don't think I can stress enough, this can't just be a school committee administration project, we need an active parent group interested in becoming part of this discussion fairly quickly, I would think.
Either way.
Either way, but especially without.
We would need, because if we don't get in, this really has to be a sudden, short term, to your point, Wally, on a very short timeframe, very inclusive community discussion to get a feel for whether this is something we can even consider moving an article like this. I mean, it's a huge question that we, there's no way we can make it, we certainly need a community discussion. And I think you're right, that running that community discussion is gonna be more than even the five of us can do. We, we would need to see if there is a group of parents who would wanna kind of jump in and help drive that discussion process.
So the MSBA announces who is in and out before their meeting?
The districts get a private phone call.
So obviously the decision was made at their last meeting or something.
No, the vetting process is done by the team and then they present it to the board.
Okay.
It's a set of recommendations that are presented, the vetting's all been done by Diane Sullivan's team.
So the meeting of the awards.
Meeting is just a.
Announcement.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So last year, we got a call from her pretty much this.
I got a call from her the end of this week after Thanksgiving.
Right. I know, I'm gonna be on tether hooks all week.
We've been talking about this for a while, not tonight, just in general. And we've got a pretty good idea of what the expenses are gonna be and they get bigger as we go forward. We spend, what, a half a million dollars extra just because we have two buildings.
Every year.
Yeah.
Oh, easy.
In August.
I think you just said a million four to do the feasibility study. If we, if we, and you know, this is new information to me, a good information to have, that we can't use that feasibility study, but who knows, we might be able to get some benefit, some cost benefit from it, maybe, maybe not. In my mind, we should be moving forward with this, this year. If we are fortunate to get into the MSBA round next year and the money we spend on this is sunk, it will be made, it will be made up by the MSBA funding in total. If we don't get in next year, we still have to do this again. We are really getting in to the point where we're gonna, major systems fail, we're gonna spend that money anyway. We can, if we build a new building, we amortize the expense of these things over twenty or twenty-five years, depending on the bonding structure. If we don't, we're doing at best five year financing to take care of these issues as they come up, displacement issues, it is, I think, putting together a cogent, compelling argument for doing this on our own is feasible. And I think we have to get, I think what we have to commit to do, if we decide to do this, is that we have to commit that in the next two months, maybe less, we're gonna nail, we're gonna nail down what that, what that presentation, that argument, what those, what those metrics are. And that is, that is non. And that is, that is non-trivial.
Oh, it's a huge project undertaken in the next few months.
But I think, I think we are doing the district a disservice and the community a disservice if we don't, if we kick this can down the road. Because it's only going to keep, look, the stock of decrepit schools in the state of Massachusetts is not getting any smaller. And, you know, there's nothing being done to increase the size of that pool. And if we get into, you know, if we have any kind of an economic downturn in the next two or three years, that's going to get even worse. And we're probably closer to that than we are further away from it. So, you know, I think, you know, if I were lucky, if I were a parent, I would think you are in dereliction of duty if we don't start to move forward on this. And if I'm a towns person, recognizing that we're going to have to do something sometime in the near future, then every, every year we wait is greater, it's a half a million dollars right off the top. It's known expenses on buildings that are going to fail. And the, and we, the construction cost is going to go up every year.
It's going to increase every year.
So, you know, there just gets to the point where, and I think we're at it. I think we're at the point where we're diminishing returns of waiting for the MSBA. And I think if we do the math and we do the subjective aspects of why this needs to be done, it will, it will certainly pan out that people who are willing to look at it in detail and listen to what we have to say, I'm pretty confident will come around to our needing to going forward, at least with the feasibility study. We buy one year to see if MSBA comes at us again. And if they don't, we're ready to move to the next stage. I think it's, I think it's a risk, I think it's a risk well worth taking.
I just want to clarify one thing you said, which is even if we do move forward with the feasibility study on our own this year, we can still reapply to MSBA.
So the way she phrased it to me, we can do whatever we want before we get invited in. It would probably become, what you need to be clean of is the ability to work with them to solicit the people who are going to do the project. So you can't have a predetermined outcome as to who's going to get bids and things like that because you've already established a relationship. All of that has to start fresh under MSBA subsidy.
And they have a bid process.
A very clear, you better believe it. Highly oversaw, a lot of oversight over that. So whatever we would do in the meantime, would probably take what you did with Weston and Sampson and make that a bigger, broader tool to use towards what you know needs to be done. But you'd want to probably do enough that it would get you moving if MSBA doesn't pick it up a year from now, right? So it's going to take some navigation to be sure we have some, something worthwhile and we haven't just spent money on something we can't benefit from if they invite us in.
Right.
But it's back to how do you know where the time is?
Well, but to your point about what, the way they regulate, they also highly regulate the design.
Yes, no question.
So if you are going it along, you might choose to have a cafeteria and a gymnasium and not one that's both. Which, or you might choose additional, you know, council offices. Or you want to keep your auditorium. So it actually isn't quite...
Yes.
Right, there are other benefits.
I mean, the designs we've talked about and what we have anticipated the community would want, you know, whatever, whatever the, what is the reimbursement amount? Is it 30%?
We're probably...
So, you know, our number's going to be lower on the gross amount because we're likely going to spend more to have a couple of these things that they're not going to fund any of.
Right.
So the numbers aren't even as...
Right.
You know, it's...
It depends how much you spent additionally.
Right.
We kept it to an extra gym, but, I mean, the more you do, yeah, the bad goes down.
They also weren't asking us to build a cafeteria.
Right, exactly.
Wally, the question I would anticipate is, why take a risk on the 1.4 million? Let's just wait a year.
Because you're going to have the same conversation next year and you're going to be a year further out. And that might be the year that we spend $2 million because we had to rent a building somewhere in another district and bus the kids there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's happened.
That's going to be the conversation every year.
That happened in Dover.
No, no, I understand that, but this coming year, that's going to be a question.
Of course, it's going to be a question no matter when you do it. Which is why I say we can't kick the can down the road.
But if, if in fact, assuming we waited a year, then, then I think...
But why?
No, I understand.
We waited a year, we applied last year.
The idea of waiting a year is to take one more year of, if you will, political pain to make it more feasible for the town to realize this is the only way to go, is what you're hearing. But we've heard many other counter-arguments. Maybe the most compelling one for a lot of people in this community is the question, are we ready to tell another group of first graders that they're going to go to the current building?
That's exactly right.
Are we ready to tell another group of first graders that's their middle school? That's a hard one to say yes to.
Yeah. And I think, I think this is a, I think we are at the point where, from a financial standpoint, this is, it's time to do this. I get that, but I, you know, that's a nebulous cost. There are plenty of costs to wait another year. And risks we take to waiting another year. Financing costs we take and annual expenses because of things we have to do that only got a five-year time horizon versus a 25-year time horizon on the amortization.
And those are all the financial offsets to moving now.
That, that to me is...
And it's not, it's not like we came this fall, we decided we needed a middle school. I mean, we've known for 10 years we needed a middle school. And the only reason it didn't get any airtime is because of the high school. And it's...
Well, you had to make a choice.
Yeah.
Whether it came down...
And, you know, so we're, by the time we bond this out, we will be almost 10 years into the financing costs of the high school. And, you know, I think when we do the analysis, and we have a guy here who I know is capable of doing a good analysis.
A little analysis.
Better than we'd have gotten, dare I say, last year. And, you know, so I think, I think it's time. I mean, I am clearly, wholeheartedly behind moving this regardless. And the way these things work, people aren't going to focus on this until it's in front of them. And if we don't move it this year because we don't get in, nobody's going to focus on it until next year. So we're going to have the same left next year. We'll have a little more time to do the work. He'll be, he'll be chairing the pair.
There we go.
He'll be the only competitor. You know, I really think that, you know, and look, if we move it and it fails, we will learn a lot.
Yes.
And it will be very clear to the MSBA that we really need them, you know, if they... I mean, it sounds like, obviously, we're not making the final decision tonight anyway. It sounds to me like there's certainly an appetite to at least plan to submit a warrant article in this round. And it's there, it's also there as a placeholder. We then have our, we'll call it three months, maybe less, so we're not scrambling at the end, but two and a half months to really have our community discussion and put together the case, listen to the feedback and all that, and come to our final decision about whether we move the article at that point. But it sounds like, are we all in agreement that we at least feel like we need to...
And certainly the hope is by December 11th or 18th, you've got facts from MSBA and have a real conversation without the hypothetical in the mix.
This is all hypothetical, right?
It is, it is.
And I think it's good to sort of air it.
Oh, absolutely.
I had some good points I hadn't thought of.
I mean, I think it would be, I mean, we should, I think we should at least get a head nod tonight so that these guys can be thinking about lining the work up that has to get done to be in position to inform the community about this process. Because we've got three months if we don't do anything until January. We increase our time by 30% if we start thinking about it.
Exactly, that's why I was saying, I'm looking for, it seems like we have a general...
Consensus.
Consensus. That's good. And hopefully, I mean, don't scramble yet, because hopefully, we don't even have to have this discussion. We're hoping we get a good call this week and, and we'll be in with MSBA support. Certainly. Showing them that we need it.
Laurie, are you going to be able to hand, to hold that phone number as you see the number on the display?
She always calls the office first, so we don't know.
Oh, my God. Jared, get it in!
And you're going to find me the moment she calls you, right?
And you're sure they got your number, right?
Yes, she's called here many times.
All right. Well, that seems pretty...
Yeah. Thanks for weighing in. It's good to start to get a feel for, at least, what are we going to do if this, if we don't get in right now? Because we don't want to be scrambling, which we're going to be anyway. It's just a matter of how much and how fast.
All right, well, we'll all do our positive ring dance.
Everybody cross all your fingers and tell us all we need to do.
Keep your calendar open.
Keep it clear. For the next three and a half months. Clearing it now.
You're not going anywhere over Christmas.
That's right.
Don't tell him you are. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if everyone's done.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.